I'd like to call the meeting to an end at this time. Okay, good evening, Exeter. Good evening to everybody here on the Zoom call participating in the Zoom meeting. Good evening to those watching on TV and on Facebook. And welcome to the June 15, 2020 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. As Chair of the Select Board, I am invoking the provisions of RSA 91A:23B. And as such, the meeting will be conducted without a quorum of the Select Board physically present in the same location. The Select Board continues to welcome the public to join us and participate in public comment throughout the agenda. And we remind you that the usual rules of conduct and decorum continue to apply. Because we are virtual, all votes will be taken via roll call. The roll call will be conducted by the Select Board Clerk, Select Woman Gilman. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the Select Board. And when I do, if you could just indicate whether you are alone in the room, and if not, with whom you were with. We'll start with the Clerk, Select Woman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
I am at home, and I am alone.
Good evening. Select Woman Roundtree Oliff.
I'm at home, and I'm alone.
Good evening. Selectman Brown?
I am at home. I am alone. My wife just poked her head in to say that a neighbor can't find the link to get in. But so if we could give a quick announcement where to go, we could pass that on. Sorry.
Okay. Vice Chair Select Woman Molly Cowan?
Hi, everybody. I am home, and I'm alone. And you can go to the exeternh.gov, navigate to the Agenda, and you can find the link there.
Thank you. Thank you. We also have our Town Manager, Russ Dean, and our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, and other department staff will be joining us throughout the agenda. The first order of business on the agenda tonight is public comment. We invite anybody from the public to come forward with any comment. We do ask, though, if your comment is relative to anything that's on the agenda, if you would, please wait until that agenda item comes up, and we'd be happy to hear your comment at that time. But if anybody has any comment on anything outside of the agenda, if you would, please come forward and state your name and address, and we'll be happy to hear from you. I'm going to pause for a moment, because I know this is new to some people that may be joining. And Bob, if you could let me know if we have anybody that is raising their hand.
It looks like we have one person. Terry Harmon is raising her hand.
Okay. Good evening, Terry.
Let's double-check something. Yeah, she should be...
Good evening, Select Board. This is Terry Harmon from Sixth Oak Street.
Hi, Terry.
Hi. So this has to do with the Sustainability Director. I'm requesting that the Select Board approve the job description for the Sustainability Director. And I request that that be brought forward from the Sustainability.
Thank you, Terry. And we will be discussing that later when I give my Select Board report. And certainly, you know, we can put that on an agenda, if not, the next meeting in June, possibly, and the next meeting in July.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else from the public wish to comment? Okay. No other hands, Bob?
No, I see. And if anyone in there is new to Zoom webinars, you can press the Raise Hand button to let the Chair know that you want to speak. And if you're on a phone, you can press *9 to...
Just give one more moment, Bob. Okay, moving on. We do not have any proclamations or recognitions this evening. The next item would be the approval of the minutes from our June 1, 2020 Select Board Meeting. If there are no revisions or addendums to the minutes, I'd look for a motion to approve the minutes of June 1, 2020. Is there a second? A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk? Select Woman Gilman, you're muted.
All right. So Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan?
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Oliff?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Next, we have a resignation from the Communications Advisory Committee. Debbie Kane has resigned from the Advisory Committee. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept Debbie Kane's resignation from the Communications Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to not remove, but accept the resignation of Debbie Kane regretfully from the Communication Advisory Committee.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan?
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Oliff?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Passes unanimously. And Debbie, on behalf of the Select Board, thank you for your service to the Communications Advisory Committee, and we wish you well. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Nina Braun to the Communications Advisory Committee with a term expiring on 4/30/21.
Mr. Chair, because we have other openings with different dates, I'd like to propose, or I will move to, excuse me, appoint Nina Braun to the Communications Advisory Committee with a term expiring April 30, 2022.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan?
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Oliff?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay. Discussion items. We have a lot tonight, as you can tell from our packet. So let's jump right in. First up, we have the Public Works Director, Jennifer Perry, to give us an update on the multiple projects that the Department of Public Works has been working on throughout the last few months. So, welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfectly. Thank you.
Great. Yes, thank you for allowing me to give you an update on Public Works projects that we've been working on this spring. First, I just wanted to give you a brief update on the draft Great Bay Total Nitrogen Permit that was issued by EPA back at the beginning of the year. There were a couple of extensions to the comment period, and the final comment period was extended to May 8. The town did submit fairly substantive comments with the assistance of an attorney. Russ did get involved. We had quite a few conversations with other communities to understand what others' issues were. But primarily, our concerns were having to do with water quality in Great Bay, making sure that it is adequately protected, but not forcing the town to go to the limits that are calculated out between stormwater and wastewater. The new permit would be fairly onerous for the town to be able to meet. And during that research work, it was discovered that New Hampshire D E S had made some actions to some of the, I guess I wouldn't, it's not regulatory, but they had made some determinations about water quality in Great Bay and not involve the public at all in those processes. And so we've additionally signed on to a letter expressing some concerns about the process that D E S had undertaken. And we'll be hearing, we're waiting to hear more on that. That's, there's a lot of moving back and forth right now, now that the period's closed. I don't know the next action that will be taken. Obviously, EPA has a lot of comments to review and respond to. It will take time. But I would imagine at some point later this year, we would be getting some kind of a response back, or hearing that they have addressed comments and have a new permit prepared. Then to some of the more yearly type of operations, one of our bigger operations is the paving program. As you know, we had $800,000 approved for paving this year. But in an attempt to meet that 10% budget reduction that the Town Manager had asked all the departments to achieve, we had to look at road surface management as one of those areas. And so we came back to the Town Manager with a reduction to $600,000. And we've been still working with Bellin Flynn. Bellin Flynn has completed paving on Arbor, Memorial, Parker, Gray Bird, Buzzell, Auburn, Highland, and Prospect. And we still have a couple more streets to do. And the next major piece is to do crack sealing on Portsmouth Avenue, and that will be in July. So, you know, crack sealing is a great way to extend the budget, if you will. It's not the same as getting a new road surface, but by sealing cracks that are formed, it does prolong the life of the pavement. And that's what we're trying to accomplish there. The wastewater treatment plant is, the project is winding down for the most part. We have the first three contracts are almost done. Apex is winding down on Contract 1, which was the facility itself, and will be complete by the end of August. We are, as you know, because you just signed or authorized the signing of the contract with Synagro to reduce, remove the sludge from Lagoon 1 and allow that to de-water on, that is going to be starting this week with a subcontractor who's doing the site work preparation for that. And Synagro is mobilizing as we speak, and will be here, I believe they start on Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday after the Fourth of July holiday. So that work will be going on fairly expeditiously, because that also has to be completed by the end of August for all of our financing to be rolled into one loan. Salem Street Area Utilities, we had retained Hoyle Tanner, and they have been completing their design work out in that neighborhood. It's not just Salem Street, but Oak Street and all the other streets in that neighborhood. We're looking at utility replacements, looping water lines, doing a fair amount of restoration, and then doing the final pavement and potentially some sidewalk. That was not initially intended in our, in our package for that area, but I think that we're hearing enough from the neighborhoods members that that is something that is very much important to them. And so we're looking at trying to combine that with our sidewalk program next year. But it would be all part and parcel of the same project. So that's making good progress. I believe the next neighborhood meeting will be sometime in July. We don't have a specific date, but obviously, we're looking towards getting as much involvement from the neighborhood as possible, and we want to make sure that that comes, comes in soon. Pickpocket Dam, which was, it's an interesting situation. That was one of the projects that we had potentially wanted to postpone, because we did have a little bit of time to allow for that, for the budget. But we were made aware of FEMA has a high-hazard dam program. And we put in a pre-application for that to determine if we could potentially be considered. And the pre-app was, was accepted, or told that, yes, we could go forward with a full application. But there, that's no indication of whether or not we would be the most likely to receive that. But we certainly have put the pre-application in, went in today. Not the pre-app, but the full application went in today. And that was the way we approached it, because it was a significant amount of funding, potentially. We put together not just the $90,000 aspect that we had been talking about for this year, but also the full feasibility study, which would have been next year's work also. So I don't know how long it'll be before we hear back on that. We kind of have our fingers crossed. If we don't get that money, we probably would be shelving this project, at least for the year.
Okay.
And the last major project that I wanted to give you an update on is our drinking water supply efforts. We've been working with Underwood Engineers, who's teamed with GZA on groundwater development and a review of our surface water treatment plant. As you may be aware, we still have some capacity in our groundwater treatment plant to be able to treat at least one additional well of a municipal volume. And that's probably the least expensive way for us to continue to develop water supply. Groundwater is cheaper to treat. It's easier to treat. It has typically higher quality. And we have winnowed it down to three potential sites that merit further investigation, further groundwater research. The thing that takes time, though, with any kind of a groundwater development is the permitting process. It's easily a two- to three-year process that is fairly intensive. So, you know, this is, that's the short-term plan. The long-term plan is, we are also pretty much, and we'll be continuing to have community discussions, but we believe that the surface water treatment plant will likely need to be replaced. It's a very challenging site. The processes are fairly old, not all of them. As you know, the chloramination component was just added this past year. But we're talking the long-term integrated water supply. We probably need to be looking at a new site. There just isn't room on that site to continue to renovate and rehabilitate and add to what we need. So that would be the next, more the long, long-term plan to look at. So those are the points I just wanted to hit on quickly. I know you may have other questions about other projects. I'm happy to address anything that you have on Public Works.
Jennifer, just to go back to that last one, when you say long-term, just an estimate of how long-term into the future?
Well, the actual work could start sooner than later, but the, the actual supply itself, we're talking about a 20-year supply. So that's what I mean when I say long-term. We'd actually probably start positioning ourselves to, to apply for additional funding and things like that as soon as possible.
Sure.
Because it does take a long time to, to line up everything. It wouldn't be inexpensive. It would be a significant, significant effort, multimillion, obviously, multimillion-dollar effort. And we're just getting the reports in, and I haven't had a chance to really delve into the report. I want to do that. We did have a meeting with Underwood, and that was very helpful. But I need to spend some time on the report. But it's a, it's a major effort.
Okay, thank you. Select Woman Gilman?
Yeah, I have a fairly light question. The, the public meetings that you're going to have on the Salem Street project, the Heritage Commission also wants to do a public meeting at that time about a topic of heritage neighborhoods. Excuse me. And I wondered if we could talk a little later with the Commission about if these two subjects can be combined so we get a bigger audience for each one, or is it better to keep the issues separate?
You know, we can certainly talk about that. I would think it might make sense to have them at the same time. I know people's lives are busy, and to be able to maybe have just one evening that they come out. We're still looking at how we would do that meeting. I know, I started the conversation with Russ last week about having a meeting of more than 10 people. And obviously, that was before the governor changed to, I don't know if he sunsetted that component of, of our restrictions with COVID-19. But I believe that there are no, no limits on the numbers that can gather. But we were even looking at potentially phasing the number of people in to meet at, say, Town Hall if we had to have a two-hour meeting, and people came in and 10-person shifts and would change out after an hour. But I think we might be able to avoid that now. I think we might be able to be successful in holding a single meeting.
I have a meeting on Tuesday night, and I'll bring it up and see what the feeling of the Commission is, too, if they want to combine issues, which are not necessarily the same, but could find some commonality.
Any other questions? Jennifer, back to the pickpocket with the application. Would that be, could that potentially be a savings over the whole project, or just what was budgeted for this year and next year? And what type of, what percentage of reduction, if it were granted, do you see?
Well, if it were granted, I believe it's a 65-45 grant. So it would be a savings to us right now for ten of the Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the feasibility study. What it means to later on, as far as construction or dam modification, it would not, it doesn't translate to that, per se. This is just for the study.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Jennifer, quickly, are you planning to go down some of the list of projects that are attached to the packet?
Um, I can.
Are there any highlights? I mean, in particular, I've had a couple of inquiries on Number 9 with the West Side Drive design, and I was wondering if you could just give us a quick update on that, and any others that you feel are worth mentioning, or that you have something to update us on?
Sure. The West Side Drive, again, that's a combined utility project, mostly stormwater and wastewater, although there could be some water also, and a, what we call a road diet, because it's such a, all the roads in there are exceptionally wide, and the sidewalks are in really poor condition. We'd be looking to narrow the widths of those roads. And some of the drainage designs that we've got, we need to consider for that location may need to, you know, include swales or infiltration basins along the roadways. So right now that we're just working out the scope and task with consultant engineer for that, we do not have a contract yet. So that work hasn't really commenced. That will be starting shortly. And yeah, that's about all I can report on that for now.
Thank you. Do you expect that any of this list of 11 would be delayed further because of the pandemic or the 10%, you know, kind of cut that we're looking at, or will they all?
Yeah, no, I don't think so. I think everything else is moving on. The only one, the Folsom Pump Station, that's a wastewater pumping station, has been a significant reduction from our initial capital improvement and estimates, because we're going to be doing the work in-house with in-house staff, and we're not going to be replacing pumps at this time. It would just be the structure, the above-grade facilities. So that's been a big reduction in effort and cost. And the Kingston Road Shoulder Project, we're still working on obtaining easements for that work. And until we have the easements, we can't really move forward with that project. And what I understand from New Hampshire DOT is that we may have missed the window of their funding for this year, and it would likely be put out a year or two from now. So, you know, we're still trying to get, get those easements. That is a major effort on our part. And so for now, I can say that, you know, likely, it is not likely to happen this year. We would have to go back to Town Meeting to get approval for an extension of time, because there was a time limit in the warrant article when it was, when it was written and voted on. So that is, that is being, I would say, postponed, but not because of COVID-19.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Select Woman Gilman, did you have a question? I saw your hand was up at one point.
Yeah, I did. I was going to ask about that project. So my question is, I understand that we're going to have to go back to Town Meeting, but is the funding still going to be available, or do we have to reapply?
It would still be available. We are in the queue. And actually, New Hampshire DOT told us that, you know, it isn't uncommon with these projects that take a lot of lead time and are put on a list years ahead, that people do fall off, or opportunities come up that we may be able to step into somebody else's slot that decided to defer a project. So even though they're, they're saying technically, they can't tell us we have the money until 2023, if somebody does this, you know, runs it against the same types of challenges that we have, that we could potentially come in in 2022. And they're, again, their fiscal year runs October to September. So that could be not that far off.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Jennifer, thank you very much for your thorough report, and thanks to you and the Department for all that you've done throughout the last couple months. It's been crazy. But obviously, the work's getting done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along. Next, we have two certificates of authorization. One is for the Swampscott River Siphons Project, the other for the West Side Drive Design Engineering. And Select Woman Gilman is the Clerk. I believe you need to read both of these, at which point we can look for a motion to approve both individually.
Okay. Here we go. This is a designation of authorities for Clean Waters SRF loan. Whereas the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, the applicant, after thorough consideration of the nature of its water pollution problem, hereby determines that the planning and design for future construction of certain works, generally described as West Side Drive Reconstruction Engineering Project, to reduce non-sanitary inflow and infiltration, or II, the project, is desirable and in the public interest. And to that end, it is desired to apply for assistance from the State Revolving Fund, SRF. And whereas the applicant has examined and duly considered the provisions of RSA 486:14 and the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter ENB-WQ500, which relate to loans from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and deems it to be in the public interest to file a loan application and to authorize other actions in connection therewith. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town of Exeter Select Board, the governing body of the applicant, as follows. One, that the person holding the position of Town Manager, currently held by Russell Dean, is hereby designated as the authorized representative of the applicant for the purposes of filing an application for a loan in accordance with the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter ENB-WQ500, furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the applicant for a loan as may be required. And if such loan may, if such loan be made, is the designated authorized representative of the applicant responsible for furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to disbursements for the loan. Two, that if such a loan be made, the applicant agrees to repay the loan as stipulated in the loan agreement. Three, that a certified copy of this resolution be included as part of the application to be submitted for a loan. Four, that the person holding the following position at the time of the loan execution are authorized to sign the loan agreement binding the applicant to the terms and conditions of the loan, Town Manager, Russell Dean. That if such loan be made, the applicant agrees to make, to make provisions for assuming proper and efficient operation and maintenance of the facilities after completion of the construction thereof. So...
So at this point, we'll need a motion to enter and approve the loan agreement and authorize Mr. Dean to sign the paperwork associated with it?
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Select Woman Gilman?
Well, I move to enter into the, and approve a loan agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services in the amount of $75,000 to the Town of Exeter, and to authorize Town Manager, Mr. Russell Dean, to sign paperwork associated with such agreement on behalf of the town. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Selectman Brown? Selectwoman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Oliff.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
The clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And just one more for you.
Okay, that one will be authenticated by the town clerk. Okay, this next one is the designation of authorities for Clean Water SRF loan. Whereas the Town of Exeter, the applicant, after thorough consideration of the nature of its water pollution problem, hereby determines that the design and construction of certain works, generally described as Swambscott River Sewer Siphons and Webster Ave Pump Station Improvement Project, or the project, is desirable and in the public interest. And to that end, it is desired to apply for assistance from the State Revolving Fund, SRF. And whereas the applicant has examined and duly considered the provisions of RSA 486: 14 and the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter ENV-WQ500, which relates to loans from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and deems it to be in the public interest to file a loan application and to authorize other actions in connection therewith. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town of Exeter Select Board, the governing body of the applicant as follows. One, that the person holding the position of Town Manager, currently held by Russell Dean, is hereby designated to, as the authorized representative of the applicant for the purpose of filing an application for a loan in accordance with the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter ENV-WQ500, furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the applicant for a loan as may be required. And if such loan be made, is the designated authorized representative of the applicant responsible for furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to dispersment of the loan. Two, that if such a loan be made, the applicant agrees to repay the loan as stipulated in the loan agreement. Three, that a certified copy of this resolution be included as part of the application to be submitted for the loan. Four, that the persons holding the following positions at the time of the loan execution are authorized to sign the loan agreement binding the applicant to the terms and conditions of the loan, the Town Manager. Five, that if such loan be made, the applicant agrees to make provisions for assuming proper and efficient operation and maintenance of the facilities after completion of construction thereof. So Mr. Chair, I move to enter into an approval loan agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services in the amount of $1,600,000 to the Town of Exeter and to authorize Town Manager, Mr. Russell Dean, to sign paperwork associated with such agreement on behalf of the town.
No motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Brown.
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Oliff.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Can I take a drink of water now?
Please do. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation from the Energy Committee to give us a summary on CPA, Community Power Aggregation. So at this time, I'll invite whoever is going to present this from the Energy Committee. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Cliff Sinnett. I am a member of the Energy Committee. I'm here tonight with Lou Hitzroth, and the two of us are going to tag team to present to you some information about community power. I'm going to sort of go over the basics of what community power is and, you know, what's changed recently, why it's become of more interest recently. And Lou is going to talk about, you know, some of the reasons why Exeter may be interested in, in working on this, pursuing it some, and then we'll see if you have any questions.
Thank you.
So electric power aggregation, or community power aggregation as it's more commonly known, basically what that is, is a grouping of retail electric customers in a town or a group of towns to create a market for contracting, the purchase of electric supply, electric energy supply. And it's not new. It's actually been around since 1996. The Enabling Law was passed then, the same year that the Electric Utility Deregulation Law passed, and because they are quite connected. And deregulation, as you probably know, separated sort of the electric market, separated utilities away from power generation. So utilities have the responsibility of distributing the power and maintaining the poles and lines and transformers. And of course, in our case, that's Unitil, and separated them from the energy supply itself, the generators of the electricity. And so that took a long time to actually develop, and that separation took a while to occur, the utilities divesting themselves of power plants and so forth. But that, that did open the door to what has developed, and the PUC calls energy supply customer choice. Customers have the choice of purchasing their electricity from energy supply companies or just getting it from the utility as the default supplier. So you might probably remember back in the 2000s, we all started getting flyers in the mail, advertising the opportunity to purchase energy supply from a number of different suppliers like North American Tower or Nextera or, or four or five others. These are actually energy brokers or resellers. And the reason why a customer might want to sign on is that they might offer a better rate, or they might offer a long-term contract, or they might offer, as many of them do, renewable energy as the, as the primary supply. But the reality was, most customers did not sign up for this as the default, I think because of inertia or price or unfamiliarity with the whole concept. I checked today, there, there are six such companies that still offer energy supply choice to Unitil customers. And actually, all of them also offer, or almost all of them, offer a renewable and a non-renewable choice. So all this time that municipalities, that this was happening, municipalities also had the ability to bid for energy supplies and essentially become the competitors, competitor, competitive supplier for their own residents or their own customers. So in other words, a town could bundle or to contract for energy and then resell it essentially to their customers in town. But no one did that. I don't think any community in New Hampshire did that. And I think it was a chicken and egg problem, because individual customers had to sign on to this. And so if a municipality wanted to go out and attempt to become an aggregator for its customers, it would have to take a guess at how many people would ultimately sign on. And so it created a difficulty in creating the sort of the critical mass to get a decent, to get a decent contract bid. So again, essentially, nothing happened on that side through all this time. Things changed last year with the passage of Senate Bill 286. That law made some changes in the Enabling Law for this community power aggregation called, which is RSA 53E. The most important change, and the one that's caused the sort of reemergence, reemergence of interest in this among municipalities, is that it, it allows municipal aggregation programs to be structured so that the retail customers in, in the service area are automatically enrolled in the program unless they choose to opt out. It used to be the opposite. The default was they had to choose to opt in. They were opted out by default. So in other words, under, if a community chooses to structure it this way, the aggregation becomes the default rather than the utility becoming the default. And at least theoretically, that solves the chicken and egg problem, or at least reduces the problem by creating kind of automatically that large customer base by default. People do not at all have to participate. They can easily opt out. In fact, the law is quite clear about that. The, you know, the program has to be designed so it's easy and transparent for people to opt out. But if they do nothing, they'll, they would be part of the program. And all this is to explain why there is now renewed interest. And Lou will get into why, you know, Exeter or any other town might want to explore it. But generally, I would say that communities that have shown interest are doing it primarily for two reasons. One, they want to have some control over their, over the energy supply that is offered in their community, particularly because they want to emphasize renewable energy sources, and they'd have the ability to, to have some influence on that mix in their community, whether it's mostly renewable or a third renewable or, or none, whatever. The second reason is they perhaps think they can negotiate a better price than, than there, than is available right now, either through the utility, either through Unitil or through one of those competitive suppliers. This, in the summary handout that I gave you, there is a list of those kind of major provisions of RSA 53E, including some of the changes that were made last year. So you, you have that. You also have a copy of the law itself. You will see that a lot of the changes focused on protecting customers that don't want to join this program if it got established. So as I mentioned, they would not be responsible for any costs that the community incurred in running its own program. If they already got their power from one of those competitive suppliers, they would not be removed from that. They would have to be notified in writing about this new program and given an easy way to opt out, as I said. Some of the other important provisions are the town, towns can join together. This is key, because I'm not sure most towns have a large enough market to actually get creative, to get a great competitive bid, but they can join together. Unlimited number of communities could join together to create a much larger retail market. They can also negotiate directly with ISO New England to, to purchase power. They're not considered utilities, which is important, because not subject to all of the same regulations that utilities are. The way the process begins in a town is that it creates an aggregation committee, which prepares a plan, which has to detail how the program would be structured, its funding, its governance, its rate setting. And if multiple towns were doing this together, they would have to work together to create that plan. What's been happening in New Hampshire so far, this, again, just past last year, so it's early days still in this, but still quite a lot of activity has happened. The PUC still has to write rules about this, so until that happens, not much can actually be put in place. But nevertheless, there are a bunch of communities that are, that are quite interested, and a group of them have formed kind of a, kind of a coalition to work on what I think would end up being a statewide nonprofit organization that would act as kind of the coordinator of these services and provider of templates and examples and information. So that's, that's kind of where we are at the moment. That organization is not really started yet, has, doesn't exist yet legally. There, the, the half a dozen communities that are, that have joined together to initiate it are still working on that. And I guess on other fronts, I think our state is going to be searching for whatever the best model to implement this is. It may be this statewide approach. It may be that larger communities just want to create these themselves, or it may be that it's a regional approach where, say, all the communities in Unitil service area might want to get together and work together on this. We don't know yet, but that's part of what has to be investigated. But nonetheless, we see some real potential here to help Exeter meet its energy goals and actually potentially help out customers at the same time. So with that, I'm going to stop and ask Lou to take over.
Okay. Thanks, Cliff, and thanks to the Select Board for letting us present. I want to start just by telling you a little bit about how the Exeter Energy Committee became interested in community power. Back in November, several members of the committee attended a conference in Concord that was organized by Clean Energy New Hampshire. And several of the presentations at that conference described community power and some of the advantages, advantages of participation in a community power aggregation. Cliff has already told you about some of the possible advantages that we, that the Energy Committee see in participation in a CPA. I'd add just a couple of things. There is the possibility of greater demand-side management from a CPA. For instance, a CPA could be instrumental in requiring the addition of smart meters to replace current devices. This would minimize the energy consumption during peak energy demands, and it also might facilitate the use of energy storage devices. There's also the possibility of integrating distributed energy resources into the local energy portfolio. This would mean a locally owned solar array, for instance, might be added to the energy, energy supply. And I think Cliff alluded to this, but it's possible that a CPA could develop the rate structure that could be designed to provide surplus revenue to fund local renewable energy projects. For instance, if a community wanted to put together a solar, solar array, there might be money available to do that. So our plan at present is to determine whether, in fact, it is advantageous for the Town of Exeter to participate in a CPA and to report back to the Select Board what our findings are. And some of the things that we plan to investigate are as follows. First of all, we need to know the level of interest of surrounding municipalities in joining Exeter in a CPA. As Cliff alluded, it's most likely that we would need an aggregation of several communities to provide the necessary demand to, to get the kind of savings that could accrue. In order to do this, we'd want to coordinate with the Rockingham Planning Commission to help us coordinate with other towns. We will need to carefully look at the advantages and disadvantages of contracting with an outside service. Cliff mentioned the fact that there may be a statewide entity to organize community aggregation programs. One that he was talking about is Community Power of New Hampshire. We would need to look into that as to whether or not that is in fact, when and if it comes into being, if that is indeed something that we would want to tie into. We will need to look carefully at our relationship with Unitil, as Cliff said. As Cliff said, they will remain responsible for distribution and maintenance of electric power, but they'll need to cooperate with us and we with them to provide the data to determine power requirements for a CPA. We'll need to know a lot about the legal responsibilities or requirements of the town as regards its involvement in a CPA. Another thing we will need to find out is what the initial investment will be required of the town of Exeter to participate in a CPA, and the length of time needed before the program might become self-sustaining. Finally, I think we'll have to communicate with the other New Hampshire communities that are much further along in developing CPAs. Lebanon, Nashua, and Hanover are examples of this. So that's where we are, and I hope that gives you a better understanding of our process and that you're comfortable with our efforts to understand and evaluate community power. So thank you very much.
Cliff and Lou, thank you, and I'm comfortable with your efforts. I mean, you've put a lot of work into this. This was a very impressive presentation and quite interesting. So I hope that we'll move forward with researching this a little bit further with some of the suggestions that you've given. One question I had, regionally, are there any towns nearby that are showing the same level of interest or have gone forward even further? Or are there any other communities that you know that have implemented this?
I'll simply say that we have heard from, I think, six or seven surrounding communities that are interested, that might be interested in joining us. As far as nearby communities that are already involved in community power, I don't think so. Cliff, other than Nashua and Lebanon and so forth that are getting into it, there's no one that is deeply involved, is there? You're muted, Cliff.
Cliff, you're muted.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you.
I forgot my Zoom etiquette. I think the only two around here that are interested, that have shown the same level of interest are Rye and Stratum.
Okay.
Those are the two that have been sort of participating like Exeter has in some of these seminars and statewide workshops and so forth. I often see people from those two towns.
Okay. Opening up to the board, any questions or comments for either Cliff or Lou?
Yeah, I was wondering, do you know, and this is maybe a question for Cliff, do you know if the other surrounding towns, if they knew about it, would be interested? Is it sort of like a lack of knowledge or, you know, maybe a lack of an energy committee or lack of resources? Or is it that they're not involved? So would you all be comfortable sort of leading the charge if there was a seacoast hub?
I think, you know, Renee, the chair of the committee, did send out kind of a blanket email to other energy committees and got quite a lot of response. I think Lou, right, six or seven who said they were interested, they were familiar with it and at least somewhat familiar with it and interested. But I think, you know, it takes something to prompt you to actually take some action, and often that is, you know, a friendly neighbor who wants to do it too, so.
Yeah, I think that's why I said that one of our first jobs is to communicate with our local communities and see what the level of interest is.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Selectwoman Gilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, one of the things that happened with the Energy Committee in the past was when we were looking at changing out our street lamps to LEDs. We did gather up several towns who are interested in doing the same kind of program with Unitil and when they were setting their rates, their tariff rates for us doing the project. And so Renee Allen is our chair, did gather a whole lot of Novak Room of people to talk about that. So she has the contacts to send out for this interest. But it's also not just a municipality project, but a county could do that. So if you all talk to all the representatives that represent Rockingham County, we might talk about it there because it has not been talked about in any of the county meetings. And I think the other thing was that in the legislation, it talks about forming a CPA committee, which could be part of our energy committee or a separate one. And I would make, I would make a, put a dub in for having the CPA committee be a subcommittee of the energy committee because there's too much interest in both of them to really be separate committees. And if you have a subcommittee, you can also add people onto that without boards being, appointing people. So if they know an expert, they can go out and get an expert to serve on that subcommittee. Properly notice meetings, minutes and everything, but not necessarily appointed by the board.
I think that's a good suggestion. We were wondering about that, Lou and I, whether it should be a separate committee or part of the existing committee. It certainly makes sense to me that it would be a subcommittee charged with this specific task. No.
I think you'd be able to accomplish more in a more expeditious manner, working with a subcommittee. Any other questions or comments from the board for Cliff or Lou? Okay. So next steps, you know, you're recommending that you continue to closely research this and monitor this, and you'd like to come back to the board at a future date? I think we'd be excited to have.
When we've answered some of our questions, we'll come back to you.
Okay, well, we'll be excited to have you back.
Okay.
Thank you so much for that presentation. It was really dig dug.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having us.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, next on the agenda, the Gilman Park ordinance update. And Mr. Dean, we had quite a bit in our packet to review. Some of it was review and some of it was new. And I'm still trying to follow the paper trail, admittedly. Do we have anything new that you can update us on before we delve into a conversation?
Sure. Well, I think the big issue with this that we needed to follow up on had to do with the bulk of the information that Ms. Pellerin had provided to the town and her commentary at the last meeting and sort of doing a little bit of a deep dive into the background of the ordinance and which prohibited dogs at Gilman Park. And we actually did find that. It dates back to 1982. So what we did was we shipped over all of the information we could over to Naomi Butterfield out of Walter Mitchell's office, legal counsel. And she looked at it and made the determination that, in fact, the ordinance had been put into play in 1982, but as she points out in her email, that the Gilman Park trustees were in control of the park and therefore in control of the dogs at the time. Now, obviously, there was a lot of back and forth about that, and the ordinance never got changed, but I think the intent seems to be that the ordinance was always sort of queued up to be changed. It just didn't happen. So now you fast forward 20 some odd years later, the town has this ordinance still in place. You have the practical issues over Gilman Park of, I think, it's been perceived to be a dog-friendly place, and the remaining trustees that are still with us would like to see that happen and have advocated for that. So that's really where we stand. So it's really a decision in the board's court how you want to handle it from here. And I know that there are lots of interested people that are involved in it. So there it is.
Before we open this up to the public, are there any questions or thoughts from Okay. I'm going to switch over to attendees. Bob, if you can help. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'm finding my screen all over the place. I have to say that looking at all of the different versions of everything that happened and some things being decided upon and voted upon, and the important one, which is remove Gilman Park from that ordinance, was never clearly voted on, that I am on the favor of, even though the town, excuse me, the trustees had had control of the property, but we used it and there was a lease and not a lease, and went through all these machinations, I think ultimately what's come out of it is that the park was meant to be dog-friendly. And what Southeast Land Trust has proposed is that we cannot have a structure, you know, fenced-in structural dog park, but we can have dogs on leashes. So I'm for that. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else on the board wish to comment before we open it up to the public? Okay, Bob, do we have anybody from the public with their hand up?
Yep, there's two people there. So Dan, if you want to hop in and unmute those people. I think Anne Sermon should be able to talk.
Hi, Anne.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yes. Good evening.
Hi. First of all, I want to thank all of you. And like Ms. Gilman, I agree 100%. I mean, there was a ton of research done. And again, I want to thank the town manager, anyone who had anything to do with that because this meeting and the last meeting, there's just a lot of data, and I definitely appreciate all the historic background that went into this. The one quick thing I would say is what seems to be consistent from as far back as when it started is what Mrs. Gilman just said, is I think the trustees wanted it to be a dog-friendly place. I think that comes across pretty consistently throughout the modern-day documents and the ones that are a little older. So pretty much to that end. I mean, I like what Ms. Gilman just said. That's kind of all I really wanted to say was that I think it should be dog-friendly. You may have to get into the nuance of what that actually means going forward, you know, not exactly a park, but a place where people can bring their dogs, and then they do have access to the trail system, et cetera. So I think that's all I have to say at the moment, just to see how things go. But I do hope that if it does end up being a vote of the board, that they will at least take into consideration the true intent of what the trustees had wanted that park to be, and it did seem to me to be, in fact, dog-friendly. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sermon. And we have one more. Bob?
Yep, this is Dawn Jelly.
Good evening, Dawn.
Hello. Good evening. Hi, this is Dawn.
Hi, Dawn, we can hear you now.
Perfect, excellent. So, well, thank you very much. I really appreciate all the board and everybody who has taken so much time to pull all the paperwork in the packet together. And I did write a letter of May 19th, which is in the packet, but I appreciate the opportunity to just verbalize some of the comments that I made and just to sort of verbalize my support that the park should be dog-friendly. And what I find interesting is that, and thank you very much for the paperwork, that said that Exeter signed the prohibition into the ordinance in 1982, and yet it was part of the trustees at that point. So part of me wonders why we're even having so much discussion when, I'm not, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but it doesn't seem to me that, seems to me that the town signed an ordinance when it wasn't their role to do that. So I think we should just cross it out and we can move on, but I know the select board has rules and regulations, so I'll just talk about my notes. And I do know there's concerns, and I want to acknowledge that. There were concerns raised during the past select board that what about the owners that don't pick up their dog waste and may contaminate drinking water with the watershed just across from the river, from the park? The concern that a dog might get off its leash and attack a child who was playing ball in the park? And that what was that concern that if Gilman Park is dog-friendly, well, what about all the other dogs in Exeter? And what I did was I did a little bit of research to kind of understand, you know, what happened in Exeter, like how and where are we at? And I was encouraged by Jody Pellerin and the other trustee that spoke about the, what the trustees wanted. And so I looked at a map of Exeter, and I looked at the parks that are easily accessible with mild terrain for all ages from the town center. Because yes, there are parks that you can drive to, but what about those parks that we can walk to? And I found there were seven parks in Exeter that were prohibited for dogs. And so interestingly, so of these seven parks, five of them are in walking distance. And there are actually six parks within that walking distance, but the sixth is Townhouse Commons, which is confusing because at the back of the park, it says no dogs. And I know Greg Bissen is working with Selt, but I just want to say that there is this sort of undercurrent that you see on social media about Exeter being not dog-friendly. And here we see evidence that it looks not dog-friendly because every park isn't allowed for dogs, and the people have been using, Gilman Park are worried that they're going to lose that one as well. And I did ask the town, I said, well, how many dogs do we have? And we've got 2,000 dogs registered. There's 9,000 residents, and then we've got the people who are visiting with dogs. So I do feel like there's a real population that we need to support in Exeter. And I understand that we need to find some middle ground. But I did spend a little bit of time, I wrote to the Exeter Historical Society and said, well, how come we have such an aversion to dogs? And Barbara wrote back and said, well, interestingly, in the 1990s, Exeter had a terrible problem. There was dog poop everywhere. And she said, the Historical Society even has many pictures of the dog poop in their archives, and people just weren't educated. And I believe people are so much better educated now. We understand about dog waste. We're never going to mitigate those people that leave waste when they are educated, the same that they'll leave litter. But I'm hoping that the rest of us that pick up dog waste can go 110% and we can do better than that. So taking that into consideration, oh, and I also wanted to say that we've got 19 lovely dog waste stations throughout Exeter. And if you go on the town website, they're sort of lost. You can't find, there's a lovely map. And so the DPW said that they would try and make that more accessible because I think what we're trying to do is improve education of everybody, dog owners and non-dog owners. And so I take that and say, to the questions that we had before, the people not picking up their dog waste, and I love Jody Pellerin's comment, said that we need better signage. We need signs that say, protect the river, clean up after your dog, protect your drinking water, that was mine, clean up after your dog, and protect people and wildlife, leash your dog, just really helping, having proper signage in our parks. And to that, I, our dog licenses for those 2,000 dog owners, for a neutered male dog, it's $7.50. And I would suggest, if we're concerned that the signage might cost us extra, then let's increase that. And I'm probably going off topic a little bit here, but I just want to encourage and say that I think with more education, we can open our parks to be more dog-friendly. Absolutely, areas need to be off limits, the playing fields where the children are, the ball fields. But I also feel there needs to be some middle ground and perhaps... But I also feel there needs to be some middle ground and perhaps, you know, we can charge or perhaps say to people, you know, if you want to pay a little bit more for your dog license, then you're going to have the privilege of using the parks. But I also wanted to say, it's not between dogs and non-dog people. There's people in between. I think we need to support those two. I was walking in the park last night and noted there was a dog with a family. There was a three-year-old, about a five-year-old, two grownups and a dog. And I thought to myself, we have to have furry-friendly picnic tables too. There are people that cross between the dogs and the no dogs. And I think part of when we look at Gilman and opening it up and making it more accessible and keeping those boundaries in place, we, we need to think about those furry picnic tables too. So thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Dawn. Any comments from any of the board other than Selectwoman Gilman want to weigh in on this? I tend to agree with Selectwoman Gilman, although my biggest concern remains, as it has been since we brought this up, and I have the memo from Jennifer Perry. Really is the drinking water and just a little bit of the unsurety of can it affect it? How much would the waste affect it? How much waste would it take to affect it? And just that unknown. Certainly, I think that the dogs, to have it dog friendly at Gilman Park would have to continue to be on leashes, I think, away from the ball fields, away from the river. But certainly we could, if the board was so inclined, try to make this work. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on the dog waste river pollutant aspect. If I remember the conversation, we were getting confused between a dog that's dog, a park that's dog friendly and allows dogs on leashes or an actual dog park, which is a built structure to enclose dogs off-leash. And I think that was more of it, what I heard or how I understood it was a dog park with the enclosure and dogs off-leash, et cetera, would have more concentration of waste matter. And that would affect the water and therefore the intake across the river from the park. But if we have them leashed and traveling throughout the park and into the trails, that it wasn't as, you couldn't tell. It was minimal, to say the least.
Selectwoman Cowan? You're muted.
I am very sympathetic to the arguments that have been made here. I like Selectwoman Gilman. I'm not in favor of a dog park. I would consider maybe perhaps supporting dogs on leashes allowed in the park. But I really have to say, I mean, I'm a new dog owner. I'm looking at this through fresh eyes. And I have taken my dog on trails that are, where there are dogs permitted and literally got out of my car with my young son to walk the trail and within moments saw a family with a very jumpy dog who was not on leash literally next to the sign that said, dogs must be leashed. So I am, and then on our walk, and I mean, I wasn't gonna take pictures of the the dog waste, but there were three bags of dog waste littering our trails. And I just, you know, folks are not helping their case when this stuff happens because then it doesn't let us have the sorts of amenities that people say they want if we have to deal with this stuff. And I'm not convinced, you know, this Gilman Park is a very sensitive area in terms of a watershed. I've heard from constituents who don't want this, who don't want dogs allowed there even on leashes because of the sensitive nature of the property. And I just, you know, I find myself really, really torn between, you know, and it's really unfortunate because it means some people are ruining it for all people. And that's a huge bummer, but I'm not interested in my child being hurt. I'm not interested in anybody's child being hurt by a dog who's not properly leashed or contained despite very clear signage literally in the same frame. And so, you know, I just, I'm torn on what to do here because I, you know, I want to be able to take my dog with me as well. But I'm not interested in policing people and policing people picking up dog waste.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, next step, Mr. Dean, correct me if I'm wrong. If we were to allow or have a further discussion to change what dogs can do with Gilman Park, do we need to have a public hearing?
Well, you need to, the recommendation was if you're going to make the change to sort of make it clean, would be to take the ordinance that was created in 1982 and delete that piece out of it with the understanding that that was always the intent and it just didn't get done. So that would take three readings to do and it would also allow you to get public input on it as well.
Right.
And then the other recommendation was to condition any change there on the notion of creating a set of regulations, basically like we do for Swayze Parkway, if you will, for the trustees. They have those lists of things that are the do's and don'ts and what you can and can't do down there. And the recommendation I would make is to have Parks and Rec spearhead that effort for Gilman Park and pull together, working with our other departments, police, DPW, you know, a list of things that would would be the rules, if you will. And it may, the timing may be good too, because we're building a new pavilion over there. And that, those are, that's a structure that's going to need some rules attached to it as well for usage. So the timing is probably good to sort of try to tackle all of these issues. And that's, that would be my suggestion to do it that way.
Is the board comfortable with proceeding in that manner?
Yeah, I think that's the way to go because we have so much happening over there. Plus, you know, the wording of the ordinance or the motion to change the ordinance or the motion to change rules, et cetera, needs a little bit more time before we say, oh yeah, and this is a public hearing. We only have two more to go. So I think it's a good approach to cover all the bases that we know are coming up shortly.
Okay, I agree. Mr. Dean, how long will that take to put that together?
We should have a first draft, I would think, for you probably by the next meeting.
Okay, let's do that, please.
Yeah, I want to target that as a goal, so.
Okay.
That'd be the idea.
Go before we move on. I'm not sure if Anne still has a question. Her hand was still up.
Ms. Sermon, are you still there?
Yes, I am here.
Hi, Anne.
Hi, sorry. One last quick thing. Thank you, Selectwoman. I just want to kind of circle back real quickly that I think the idea of the public hearing is a great idea because you do need a lot of public input on this type of thing and you have to by statute anyway. But I also just want to add a quick thing because I've been a dog owner for, well, at least around here, since at least 2005. And I will tell you, the whole discussion becomes all about dog poop. I hate to say it that way. I've gone out to Rye Beach for many, many years and about every probably five or six years, they have an issue of dogs on the beach, et cetera. And years ago, I went to their selectmen's meetings, even though I didn't live in the town, because I went to that beach and I wanted to preserve what we had out there. And it really is, that's the whole thing. Everybody out there, the real responsible owners, which is 90% of them, it's that small group that kind of ruins it for the rest of us. But in the end of the day, what Rye did, and I'm not saying Exeter needs to do this, but they literally put a sign up that said, it's a $1,000 fine, believe it or not, out at Rye Beach, the one behind the surf club, if you litter. And litter is considered the dog waste. So I will tell you, you very rarely see any bags or any, anything out there because they take it very seriously. And the folks who live there on that beach, they want it dog friendly for the most part. It's been on their warrant several times and luckily it's always voted, or has been up to now. It couldn't change, but the town has voted to keep the dogs on the beach at restricted times in the summer, of course. I won't go into all that. They have regular hours in the summer versus winter. But I will tell you, the really good dog owners, they will run up to somebody whose dog has done something with a bag in their hand saying, oh, did you forget a bag? Here you go. I mean, they really, once you have this kind of thing, I'm here to tell you, the folks who really want to have it happy for the dogs, they will take care and they'll police their own. And I just, I just want to add that because I've been down this road, even in towns where I'm not even part of it. And it's, I think they'll, I think they'll do the right thing. But I love the idea of the public hearing. I think you need to hear from all sides, because I know you have to hear from all sides. And just get a real flavor for what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. And I don't, I don't disagree with that. And I think, you know, that's interesting what Rye does. And undoubtedly, the people who are passionate about having a dog-friendly park without, without a doubt are gonna take care of it because number one, it's their town and it's, you know, their opportunity to have a dog-friendly place to go. But I agree with Selectwoman Cowan. I mean, you know, there are places that you go anywhere that there are those dog owners that are not responsible that, you know, you see that and you see it more times than not. I'm still convinced about the drinking water and I'm, I want to look into that a little bit more before the next meeting. And as Selectwoman Cowan said, I've also had constituents who have strongly, strongly are not opposed to anything dog-friendly, but are opposed to where this area is and the fact that that drinking water supply is there. So thank you again, Anne, and we'll take this up at the next meeting.
I do want to say one more thing, though. I would really love to see, you know, dog owners educating other dog owners. Because I think that that's a really important component of having a dog-friendly town is to feel safe around, around other dogs and around other dog owners. And so that means complying with the rules, you know, like Anne Sermon was saying, you know, offering a waste bag if you see that. Because I, I'm just, you know, it's one of those things that's really, that's really frightening to see an unleashed dog coming around a corner at your child because, you know, they're, they're, everybody thinks that their dog is great and dogs are great, but they're unpredictable. And so I would really love to see a more concerted effort with dog owners educating other dog owners. Because that's, I think, where we're gonna make some progress.
Well said. And I don't think a fine, you know, that's, that's not something, at least in this park, that would be enforceable and it's not about fining. It's, you know, I think, as you said, we need to, you know, educate those that aren't as responsible. So, okay, we will table this until next meeting.
Mr. Sheriff, I may interject real quick. Dawn Jelly does have her hand up again.
Okay. Hi, Dawn.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to say one thing and I understand the concern about the drinking water. And I think we should, and if we are thinking about this, consider the park in different areas, like maybe down by the area that is the water inlet is not able to have dogs. But there are other parts of the park too. There's the walk by the river that you just cut through from Bellab to PEA. So I think as part of this, we just need to consider parts of the park as opposed to the park on a whole. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
No, agreed. I think, and also the baseball field. I think if we can, if we move forward with this, you know, have the same idea with the, with the baseball field, just to mitigate any opportunity for a child to get injured.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Dawn. Next on the agenda, we have our COVID-19 update. And we have quite a few updates, discussion points from several staff members and the town manager. We also have a petition that was submitted to, I believe, town offices sometime late last week that's included in our packet that we'll discuss. Mr. Dean, I know we have town staff on, so let's, let's start with staff giving their updates. If that's okay. I know we have Chief Wilking, we have Darren Winham with us. And also Greg, do you have any part of the COVID-19 update or are you after that?
He does.
He does, okay. Chief, let's start with you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board, and thank you for the opportunity to address you again. I'll be brief. I know there's a lot of people coming, but I just want to kind of point out we've had possibly the most exciting two weeks since movement on the whole coronavirus in the state of New Hampshire. We saw a 40% drop in positive tests over the last two weeks. We've run over 1,000 every period and this two-week span, 667 people, 116 in Rock County. And it's gone about eight a day. Exeter has actually gone quite a while since we've seen one. We had one case tested the last two weeks and the fire department run volume is picking back up. Normal EMS and fire, but we haven't seen a number of COVID cases, even COVID suspected cases. So we're seeing a lot of positive things happen in the state of New Hampshire. I, like you, have listened to the governor and I hope Russ and others fuck more about that. But so just to move on, our PP remains strong. We got an extra stash last, early last week. So we've got thousands of gloves, of masks. I don't believe this is over by any shot, but we are well positioned should we begin to see a little bit of an increase or a spike again, late summer, fall. I think we're gonna be well positioned to protect the town and its residents. I'll just round out by saying, in my position as the EMD, I have remained engaged and met with FEMA and the state today on our request from FEMA. They have accepted our application. It's in the review process. Everything's done online now. We should hear very shortly on that. And I know Russ sent an email today and I respectfully requested some information on the, on the Gopher funding and there have been so many towns that have hired reimbursement requests. It is a slow process. I guess I would put it in the category, no news is good news because a couple of communities I've spoken to have been reached out from the state and there's been questions on their applications and parts may not be accepted as presented. So they're gonna go back and have to refile and we have not received any word of that. So we're working with our HSCM rep with that, but making sure. And Doreen and I, I'll leave it at that. I'll obviously stay on the line, but I know a lot of other people have a lot more to share.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments for the chief before we move on? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Winham?
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing?
Good, thank you.
So Chief has some good news. I have some news from Gopher as well, which is this Main Street program, I think a lot of folks know, has been really tough. The Main Street Relief Program, the state program, has been kind of challenging because they kind of changed the rules mid-stream and took sole proprietors out. We're hoping and we believe there'll be another resource for those folks because those make up the largest segment of businesses in the state. So it's been a pretty crazy week. We've been trying to help a lot of businesses. There's a lot of Exeter businesses did receive it and that was great. There's a couple that got shut out that we're still trying to work on. I definitely want to thank Molly and especially Julie, who are wonderful, and Senator Morgan. And I will say that it is very likely that we might have lost a very important business in this town had we not had the help of those folks. So that was a big, big deal and a big win for everybody. So thank you again so much for that. So just give a very brief update. The Main Street Relief Fund now is gone. The people are gonna start receiving their money today. There was a pretty large change in the paycheck protection program, the PPP, whereby they add flexibility for the forgiveness ratio on the non-wage expenses from 75% payroll to 75, 25 to now 60, 40. So that's a big deal for a lot of companies. There's also a new program out that we're really trying to wrap our minds around, a federal program that is a justice strictly lending program. It's called the Main Street, has to be named this, but the Main Street Lending Program. Again, that runs to the SBA. And so we're getting that out to everybody now. And the last thing that was new this past week was the New Hampshire Nonprofit Emergency Relief Fund. And of course, we got out to 940 Exeter businesses and 12,000 businesses in Rockham County. County. And um, I think a lot of people are asking if they can get put on the list, even though they're not a business, they would like to find out what's going on. So just want to let people know, if you go to uh, the Town of Exeter webpage, and go to the COVID-19 resources, and find the Economic Development one, and you'll be able to just put your name right in there, and you automatically get all the uh, all the emails. And I think that's all I have.
Thanks, Darren. Any questions or comments for Mr. Winham from the board?
Thanks for all that you're doing, think it's really important, and I know this is really confusing, and I'm glad our businesses have a, a resource.
Thank you. Great.
Yeah, I'd like to second that, because I get so much information on so many different topics, that if I didn't have someone like you pointing out the problem areas, I wouldn't be able to point in the right direction of where to go to find the answers. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Darren. Greg, Mr. Vison. You're muted, Greg.
Sorry about that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to give the board an update on uh, our summer programming uh, with the COVID Care Kids Program, and actually, we filled the 18 uh, spots, the minimum we needed uh, needed, within 48 hours.
That's great.
So uh, we have quite a bit now on the waitlist as of 2:30 on Friday, uh, and these numbers, I can give you an update, it's in your packet. We had three residents and three non-residents on the grades one through four, and two residents and uh, three non-residents on grades five through seven. We took approximately four more registrations on the waitlist today. So we're almost ready to open up each of the next nine groups, so we'll be up to 36, so we could uh, we anticipate to have that by the end of the week, so that's the good news. So there'll be nine more spots left. Uh, the one thing I definitely want to advertise uh, for people that may be wondering, uh, talking with James, and I know he's on here, uh, it's been brought up from multiple agencies that it's very difficult to keep the kids apart six feet. So it was determined that uh, we could let the kids in the group interact with each other. So that is good news, so uh, it was going to be very difficult to keep the uh, the kids socially distancing the whole summer. Uh, the groups will stay separate still, uh, that's one of our, our main goals, because at least if one group gets a positive COVID hit, the other groups would not be interrupted. Uh, so that's the good news. The next good news is movies, the drive-in movies have been a big hit on social media. Uh, we actually filled up our first week, we have 50 cars reserved for Friday, the 19th, for Shrek. We have uh, lots of them are filling up, uh, to give you a lineup, we're doing a lot of classics, a lot of people wanted to go the classic route. So we got Jurassic Park, National Treasure, Goonies we're still waiting on, because the uh, studio needs to give us permission for that. Uh, Raiders of the Lost Ark, Pirates of the Caribbean, Grease, and Harry and the Henderson, so we are really excited, uh, people are really excited as well about the summer concert series. I gotta say, Rusty Lister over at the SAU and Dr. Ryan have been outstanding, uh, they provided a stage and power for the concerts, so uh, that will be this Thursday, uh, the first concert, come on down, the Midnight Rens from Exeter. Uh, everyone, if you've known uh, Tom Pauly, he is leading that charge, so he is going to be our uh, our, our main performer in the first time. Uh, and then lastly, I just want to cover this, because a lot of things got turned on the head recently, when the governor did announce that pools could open, and I wanted to just kind of clarify why the Daniel R. Healy Pool went to open this summer. Uh, first of all, the restrictions that were laid out for us to run the pool would be very restrictive. I mean, six-foot distancing in and out of the water, masks being worn on the deck at all times, extra staff on the deck to make sure these are being adhered to, sanitation, I mean, we have to take temperature checks going into the pool. So that would cut our revenue down substantially, especially if we decided we wanted to do residents only. But also, the fact that we wouldn't be able to run any swim lessons. You really can't teach a child in Level One how to swim if you can't actually touch them. It's, it's, it's kind of very difficult. So uh, we had to cancel swim lessons as well, so uh, it's more of a financial issue than a safety issue. Uh, and now, of course, when it comes down to, we have no staff. So if someone would generously came up with $40,000 and said, hey, would you open the pool, we'd be hard pressed to find enough staff. The one thing that I would want to emphasize is, it's not like the Red Cross was certifying a lot of new lifeguards this year. A lot of their classes were canceled. So, and they, they, it was very difficult. They did give extensions to those that had lifeguard certifications for three months, so they could at least lifeguard throughout the summer. But uh, that is few and far between, and uh, I just wanted to give everyone an update on that. But we are working on a plan to possibly open the spray pad. We have some logistics to uh, work out, and uh, hopefully, next meeting, we can do something where we can possibly open in July, for a limited number of people to actually come and, and enjoy the spray pad.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments uh, for Greg from the board? I'm happy to hear that the um, kids' care is filling up, and uh, you and Melissa have done a great job advertising that for sure, so. Much appreciated.
I do have a, I did have one question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Were there any Exeter families that were sought to get in, who weren't able to afford it, or?
We had one person approach us for financial aid, uh, we are, have them on hold right now. Right now, it's, Darrell, it actually comes up to getting the full nine to be able to access that person. So uh, I think uh, we'll be working it out uh, to get them in, we'll, we'll find a way to get them in.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, uh, Mr. Dean, I know that, excuse me, I know that uh, James Murray and Jennifer are still on, did they have anything COVID-related, or?
Um, I don't believe so, although I do, um, if James does, he can raise his hand, but uh, one of the things I just want to point out, um, is the conversations we're having about COVID are literally every day on just about every walk of life, uh, town events, town facilities, uh, you name it, we're having those conversations daily. So as we know, we're about to go into what I'm calling the next phase of, of re-entry, if you will, and we're going from a phase of um, that we've been in to really sort of looking at these stay-at-home guidelines, uh, or the guidelines that have been put in place for all the various industries and things that are, are happening. And we've uh, been in process, and again, it's been a great team working on this. Uh, Pam from my office has been a big help, uh, Jeff back over in our maintenance department, uh, James Murray, great job, Chief Wilking has been great, uh, just about everybody involved has, has really put in a lot of effort on this. And so we crafted a town offices re, reopening plan, that's in the packet tonight, and I didn't, you know, I didn't design it to spend a huge amount of time on it, um, but I can tell you that a lot of thought went into it at the administrative level, and we've also been working with uh, the library and the uh, and the Parks and Rec to look at different aspects of opening the building. And as you can imagine, some of the big issues that we have to deal with are uh, keeping our employees safe, uh, looking at the universal guidelines, and implementing things that are included in those guidelines into our plan, uh, and also uh, making sure that all of the signage and other things like that would be in place before we could actually physically open up. One of the other major issues we have is capacity, and James has been great on that, he's been going around buildings, measuring square feet, uh, and has really helped us sort of queue up what we think would be appropriate in terms of allowable, uh, I'm getting a message, my internet connection's unstable, hopefully you can hear me. Assessing those capacity issues for things like the Town Clerk Lobby, as an example. So what we're suggesting in the reopen plan, when we get there, is to have a limited number of people in the building, obviously at any given time. We are going to uh, encourage social distancing, of course. Uh, we do, we would like to ask the public to wear masks if they're in the building, and we will do the same if we're providing service to people. Um, and so, you know, again, the documents meant as a, as a discussion item, and, and for you, give you a chance to raise any particular questions you want after the, after the opportunity of edit. And I think we're on track, if everything works to the way we were thinking, uh, we could, uh, we're looking at sort of July 6th, which is Monday after the 4th of July, to have sort of everything in place that we would need in order to open up the different buildings with the guidelines in place and with everything finalized. I don't know if I turned off, or?
No, you, no, no, I, I um, I didn't know if you were done, because you're, it was, I could hear you, but it was kind of slow.
Okay. I am in the, I am in the town offices, so. This is not a home, a home internet connection.
You know, um, Mr. Dean, this is, this is something that all, all municipalities are looking at, and you know, for my client base, we've been dealing with this in Massachusetts, and you know, no, no two towns are, you know, doing it the same way, but they're all struggling with trying to find the safest way to um, to open back up. One concern I have, and, and James, maybe you could comment on this, I'm not sure, but um, I've read a lot about air conditioning units, and the, the fear of the way that air conditioning units are, as they are now in buildings, that that could be a source of spreading the virus. Do you have any information on that?
I haven't heard anything specifically about um, you know, cubic feet per minute or anything like that. I have heard that air systems might be something to take a look at. From what I've heard as long as they're functioning, I know functionality has been a big concern. So I can't speak to um, you know, what specifically about air conditioners might be a concern, but I know people have been looking at functionality, yes.
Okay, all right. Selectwoman Gilman.
Um, well, I've heard, excuse me, I've heard the same concerns, and, and one of the questions about it is, uh, is it a system that's recirculating air? Or is it a system that takes in air and pushes it out? Uh, so the air is, you know, blowing over instead of just taking what's in the room and putting it back in the room? The other thing I had has to do with the policy, but we, we have several pages of different things in our packet about housing, uh, funding and things like that. Are we going to talk about those, or just say, just list them that these are available, and please look at this website and everything?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we can, we can get into a, a discussion on those items too, that's fine.
Before we do that, Selectwoman Ratriolif.
Yeah, I just, I just want to put it out there that um, unless anyone is actually an expert on uh, the topic of consequences about air conditioning, or you know, other things like that, I just, I just, I'm very wary of us making statements that um, without actual factual data or some sort of reference point. Because I do think that people are listening to what the conversations that we're having in these meetings, and so I'd rather not have anecdotal, or just um, I heard from kind of comments when it comes to that, because I think, you know, we've seen it happen. Excuse me?
It was a conversation amongst 400 state representatives.
Right, but was, was there something, was there, what was the reference point? Was there, it was a conversation among people? Was there an expert who gave testimony to this?
There was.
I just want to make sure that we have actual, right, actual connections, so that we're not confusing people, and all of a sudden, everyone's like, oh, don't use your air conditioning, or?
No, I understand what you're saying, um, I'm talking about large areas, of course, um, and the, the recommendation from the um, HV, the HV, the mechanical personnel, the HVAC personnel at UNH, was that there's the kind of system that they have, which passes the air through, doesn't recirculate through the arena, um, was, was an acceptable form of air conditioning. Now, uh, what you have at home and your home, your home air conditioner, I don't know if that works the same way.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is just, I just want to make sure, because I myself, listening to this, was, was a little confused by the, the conversation points, I just want to make sure that we're, we're very clear about what we're talking about, so that we're not, you know, saying something in passing, and then people are misinterpreting, and I don't know, digesting bleach.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, just putting it out there. Thanks.
No, and I appreciate that too, I agree with you. The only reason I brought it up, it was um, and it was a month ago, so that's why I was hoping Mr. Murray had more information, but there was an article in the front page of the Boston Globe, and, and uh, in addition to that, I know the building that my office is out of in Boston, they're not reopening yet because they're examining that, so um, the only reason I brought it up is I knew just enough to be dangerous.
Thanks, Nick, I just wanted to clarify for those who happen to be listening.
Thank you, no, I appreciate that. Greg, uh, you had your hand up at one point?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, one of the things that nationally, uh, that topic actually was brought up in a lot of recreational centers around the country, uh, reopening, and a lot of them, my colleagues have been installing UV. I'm not an expert, and I agree with Lovey, I, I just wanted to pass on, that, that's one of the things that they've been looking at, installing the UV light to help kill the virus.
Thank you. Mr. Dean?
Yeah, the only other thing I think I wanted to add was just in terms of the cloth face coverings, what we're going and looking at as our guideline on those items, are the universal guidelines and what they say, and also the CDC website. So we're trying to use official sources as much as possible to sort of guide our thought process, and you know, again, when we get to the stage of being able to open the building to the public, um, one of the things is that if someone comes in and doesn't have a face mask, uh, we will offer them one, and we're prepared to have our employees do that. I think where we want to make sure we're, we're careful is that, you know, we don't want to be in the business of policing that, that item either. And so we're just, you know, we're going to be asking for people's patience and make sure they work with us as much as possible, because again, we're following the guidance, and we realize the numbers are getting better all the time, and that's a great thing. You know, we're excited to see that, as far as the numbers coming down, that's good, as the chief pointed out. But we're also going into a different phase of this again, where there's going to be sort of this notion that people may not want to, uh, I don't want to say do as much, but be cognizant of things, certain things, that we really want to continue to reinforce as we have members of the public coming through our buildings. And we think it's a joint mission between ourselves and, you know, our community. So that's, that's really what we're trying to do, and uh, help people be responsible, help us, and keep the spread down like it has been, and hopefully, things will, will get better.
Selectwoman Gilman. You're, you're muted, Julie.
Sorry, sorry. Can you drink more? I appreciate the level of work that went into this and coordinating with all the different um, departments, especially those that are within the town office that see the most people. Um, and, and I, the aspects in it that are, you know, straight out of the CDC guidelines, great. The only one, there's only one problem I saw in there, I know this is a draft, in draft form, but uh, you do use the word require for face covering, and we can't do that. We'd love to do that, but we can't do that. Can recommend or urge, I think Durham has a good word, I don't remember what it was.
Okay, we'll relook at that. I thought that was for, for internals, um, but we'll take a look at that.
It was for any, any member of the public.
Yeah, yes, okay. Yeah. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Select woman Gilman, I agree. And I think that, um, you know, obviously we would strongly suggest that anybody visiting town office for business, um, would wear a mask. Um, but I think that segues into the next part of the COVID agenda, if the board will permit me to, um, and that was, I believe, select woman Gilman, um, you asked that we talk about that. Face masks, um, at our last meeting. So it's on the agenda. Um, I know Durham, I believe another community nearby, um, did not pass an ordinance, but came out with some wording that strongly suggested that people wear face masks, um, or cloth masks. I think the city of Nashville passed an ordinance and that is now in litigation, correct, Mr. Dean?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And I, I, the latest information I have is that they were expecting a decision on that very soon. I'm not sure exactly when, but no one really knows until the decision gets made. But, um, they're speculating it could, could come within days.
Yeah, I put this on the agenda. It's a Portsmouth has, Portsmouth and Durham have, um, come out with a, I don't know what it's called, policy. It's not even a policy. It's just a thing, a recommendation. Um, but I, I asked to have it on the agenda because I have been asked by, um, many people, um, even across the state, if, uh, we were going to have a mandate in town about face covering. And I wanted to put it out here on, in the public to say, I certainly recommend, strongly recommend that you are face covering when you're out in public, but, but we cannot mandate it. Um, so I'm just, I just had to tell everybody by state law and that's, and the governor hasn't done it. So therefore we can't do it.
Um, we do have a petition that's included in the packet. Um, and I'm going to ask, the petition as it's written appears to be anonymous. And typically when somebody submits a petition, we ask them to, um, to speak to it at the board. Uh, starting off by reading the petition and then, and then maybe speaking to it. So I'm going to ask, because it appears to be anonymous, is there anybody in the public that's part of this meeting is an attendee that actually authored this petition? And if so, uh, you're invited to, to speak to it. And I'll pause for a minute to see if, uh, anybody steps forward. Bob, you can help me out and see if there's anybody with their hand up?
Yeah, right now I don't, uh, don't see anybody.
So 50 people signed, um, a petition to the town of Exeter Select Board, uh, which I will read. Uh, seeing that the author is not here as part of the meeting. It reads, "We, the undersigned residents of Exeter oppose any mandatory face mask policy in Exeter. Although COVID-19 is dangerous to elderly and at-risk persons, social distancing, hand washing and keeping at-risk people sheltered has already succeeded in flattening our curve. Exeter cases remain in single digits. Businesses should remain free to determine PPE rules for their businesses and citizens should remain free to support or avoid businesses of their choosing. Live free or die. All residents need to be respectful of others. There are valid reasons why people cannot wear masks. Most of us have plenty to worry about in our own lives without intruding in or judging others. Shaming in public confrontations over different opinions must be strongly condemned. Talking points that reflect a single political party or media channel should not be allowed on town, social media sites." And that is the petition written in, in its entirety, again, with 50 citizens, um, being signatories. Um, before I ask if there's anybody out there, uh, that wishes to comment publicly, I'd like to open it up to other board members for comment. Select woman Gilman, do you still have your hand up?
No. I'll speak.
Select woman?
I've been approached by several, um, residents in town over the past week, uh, to this effect. I didn't realize the, uh, petition was in motion. I don't, I think it was, um, it was out for a couple of days, but, um, a neighbor put a copy in my mailbox, um, and, you know, it was made clear that there is a sense of, um, the social shaming that I did see someone who was running for public office was, um, you know, host or inviting people to put on, to send pictures of people without masks and she would then pixelate out the faces. But, um, yeah, there's just so many angles to cover this from, at the, from my own business at the Salt Cave, I encounter a lot of people who have different health issues ranging from anxiety to, um, autoimmune stuff where their doctors are saying they can't easily wear masks. So back to just the, the way our state works, uh, it's not the onus of, um, so as select woman Gilman pointed out, like our, um, the town just doesn't have the authority unless given so by the state. So it's a moot point there, but, um, you know, we just get into, it's a, it's a nuance of language mandate suggest, um, but, um, you know, we really, um, the sentiment is wide and deep and, um, you know, we're at a place where we just have, need to make sure the discourse stays, uh, for, for us, for the board, within legal bounds for sure. But we do, we have reached a place in the protest, I've sort of brought that up too, where we want to make sure we maintain civil discourse so we can actually, um, move forward with things in this, you know, anyway, I defer to, yeah, I give my comment.
Thank you, Selectman Brown. Any other members of the board? Select woman Cowan.
Um, I'm not for public shaming, however, please wear masks. It's really important. It shows care and compassion for your fellow citizens. Um, as, as we've had a lot of research suggesting.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Bob, do we have any, um, any members of the public who wish to speak?
Right now I don't see anybody's, uh, hand raised, but they can sit at this time if they wanted to.
What are the wishes of the board? Um, I think we've had several board members speak their opinion. Do we want to, as a board, um, make a suggestion much like Durham or Portsmouth or?
I would, I would make that motion. I, um, I agree and I understand that we cannot have a requirement to wear a mask in town, but I think that we should strongly encourage and do it in the strongest possible terms.
Okay. Do you want that motion tonight?
Yeah.
So what's the strongest possible term? Recommend, uh, strongly recommend?
And I, and I especially think that people should wear, um, should wear masks inside if we're not going to require them and we're not going to be in the business of handing out a fine or policing or, you know, refusing to do business as town employees. Uh, but, but it is close quarters and close space and, um, you know, if one of our employees gets sick because of COVID-19, because of a, a, uh, person who comes in to do town business, like that's a, that's a taxpayer expense that we are all paying for. Uh, so I would, I would really urge diligence and care when, especially when dealing with town staff in our town structures.
Mr. Dean, I closed my browser by accident and I lost the, um, the article about Portsmouth and Durham. How did they, um, work out their language? Is it a policy or just a statement or? I just don't recall.
Uh, not overly familiar with, uh, the, uh, Portsmouth one yet. The Durham one is, came in the form of an administrative order by the town council. But it was a, uh, I would describe it as a policy statement that they created and adopted.
Okay. Just, just a question. Are we intending to provide police, fire, um, other municipal locations with masks for those who do not have them readily available? So if police officers are walking through town and people don't have masks, are they going to hand them out? Are they going to offer them to people? What, you know?
That's, I'm, I'm, I'm. Yeah, I, I, I totally agree, um, Lucky, because I don't want this to be an economic barrier or an issue and you know, quite frankly, some of these masks are hard to come by if you're not handy or you don't, you know?
Get out, buy in bulk. Yes.
Mm-hmm. So James, I think James popped back on, I'm, I probably to address this maybe, but that was, that would be something that I would be interested in seeing.
Okay. So then my second point to that is before we put anything to paper, I think we then need to do our due diligence before we, you know, put out some sort of, um, whatever terminology it is that we use, whether it be a highly suggested, a mandate, a proclamation, whatever, that we then have the masks available if we're asking people to use them. You understand what I'm saying? Like it's, I'm not a, I'm not a huge fan of telling people that they have to do something, but then we don't have.
A solution.
Right.
James, it, I mean, it's my understanding that we do have a surplus of these, of these masks.
We don't necessarily have a surplus for ourselves. I mean, the emergency departments do, um, at the moment. I'm looking into getting more masks from the state for our municipal buildings. Um, at this point, I'm hoping to hear back tomorrow. It sounds like we might be able to get some to give out to people that are looking to use our buildings at the town offices. We might have some available. But at this time, I don't know how many or how often we'll be able to replenish that stock.
And, and I think in addition to what you said, Selectwoman Rontrioloff, um, I think that if, or, or if we're going to suggest this and there are citizens in town that simply do not have the resources to obtain a mask, that perhaps we consider setting up places in town where somebody can go and get a mask. Whether they're visiting a town office or not, if they don't have the resources to get a mask, that we can provide a mask.
Right. Because as Selectman Brown stated, my biggest concern is once there's something put to paper that the town of Exeter is requiring, recommending, highly recommending that all residents wear masks, whether indoors or outdoors and people are not wearing them. It's the personal interactions that we've already seen thus far without that on paper that concerns me in addition to the exposure that other people are feeling to the actual virus itself. So I just really, I don't, I, my personal opinion, I wear a mask. I have my children wear masks when we're out and we're in close quarters with other people. But I also understand, like Selectman Brown said, that not everyone, for health reasons can wear it. And we've also put out there that for financial reasons or for access, other people don't. So I just really, as a select board, I want to do what's right for the majority of people. And I don't want to create a problem where there isn't one brewing already. Um, if that makes sense. I just, something for us to really flush out. So I, you know, Molly, I'm with you a hundred percent in terms of, I, I wish everyone just had that internal inclination to do it. But they don't.
Well, and I think, I mean, I think that the, I, I totally agree and I don't want to mandate, which is why we can't, I mean, we're not mandating anything, right? Like this isn't a mandate. So I think what, what I would be interested and very comfortable saying is we're going to vote on something tonight that says we strongly suggest you wear a mask in public. And, um, and when you, especially when you come into town build, town buildings. We are working with our emergency management personnel to obtain masks, which we will put out, um, as soon as, as soon as we have some sort of system in place because the state opens tonight at 11:59, um, despite significant evidence of other states who opened up facing huge increases in, um, in cases. And so, you know, one of the things that I want to have in place before this happens is, you know, where our town government stands on strongly suggesting that you wear a mask in public to, to help protect the health, the health and care of our community members.
Selectwoman Cowan, I agree with everything you just said. Do we want to tie up the language though, when we say that we're suggesting in public? I mean, is that anywhere and everywhere in public? Or are we talking about if you're in a public place that's, you're indoors or outside where you're less than six feet apart? Or are we suggesting everybody?
I think that, I think that we should, we should tie it with, you know, the suggestions that come from our medical,
CDC.
medical experts. And so, you know, they say when you're alone on the street running, there's no need to wear a mask. When you're out hiking, when you're with your socially, you know, your, your germ pod, whatever you're calling your, your people that you're in close contact with, it's not required. And I, the other thing that I understand, um, intimately is that we can't require businesses to force people to wear masks in their, in their private business where they own or rent the space. So with the understanding that business owners can make whatever recommendations or whatever requirements they want for their own establishment. Um, and then, you know, sort of let it sort out what happens with, you know, if you, if you feel strongly like I want to protect myself and my, my family and I don't, and I believe that that includes wearing a mask, that I won't go to these places where it's not, where people aren't wearing masks. Or if I say, you know what? I believe in in my right to not wear a mask, then you, you know, then you're free to do whatever you want. But I, I really think that we need to be, um, encouraging people because I'm very interested in seeing an economic recovery. I'm really interested in making sure that our, that our schools, especially as a mom of young kids, can open. I'm really interested in seeing, you know, our downtown being, being strong and vibrant. And part of that is a, a showed concern and care for our community, which includes unfortunately, wearing these horrible masks.
Very well said. Selectwoman Gilman?
Uh, well, I agree with the selectwoman Cowan. I'm just trying to figure out after.
I thought you were raising your hand.
No, I was fixing my light because it was blinding me and I'm going to do it again, but, um, um, no, I think we should go ahead and do it. I'm just trying to figure out the wording of, you know, strongly recommend or suggest or urge or? Yeah. Um, because we can make it short and simple and then add on to it. And I, I agree with, uh, Selectwoman Rontrioloff's, uh, comment about being ready to, you know, answer the question, well, where can I get some? Um, and I, I'll, James, I'll send you an email I got from Nashua about, I think they were working, they're working with either the Salvation Army or Big Brothers, Big Sisters somehow gathering enough masks for that, the city of Nashua. So we have some hope there. Um, and I know somebody in Florida that's also working on distribution of goods to New England, actually. So I'll send you an email. Okay, Molly, make the motion.
Hey, let me try this. Um, so I move that Exeter stra, uh, strongly recommend wearing masks in any situation that you would be dealing with the public in close quarters.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat it again, Molly? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I, um, I move that Exeter, the Exeter Select Board strongly recommend wearing a mask when you are in close quarters with members of the public.
Do we need to specify indoors and outdoors?
I don't know.
Cause quarters makes it sound like indoors when I hear it.
That's.
I could be wrong.
Close proximity?
Yeah, proximity sounds more airy.
Okay. Oh, yes. I will, um, make that, I will include that amendment.
And I'll second that, the amendment.
Any further discussion from the board? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Uh, Selectman Brown. Selectman Brown?
Yes.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Rontrioloff?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes four to one.
Okay. So how do we advertise that?
James, get his mask.
No pressure, James.
None taken, yeah.
He's like, this wasn't on the agenda.
If I, if I could just add with James, what, what became interesting to us a couple of weeks ago was the state was very agreeable to donating and giving masks, uh, surgical masks for the public. Uh, and then it became evident that people were, were stepping up and asking for thousands or tens tens of thousands of masks to open businesses. And it became a process of, we can supply you masks, but there's a cost involved. So I think when James and I reach out um to our state partners, there may be a nominal cost involved with the masks. Or as many of you pointed out, there are still avenues of getting the homemade cloth masks. We honestly just haven't explored them since most of the townspeople, the employees, have a mask. But now, obviously, with this, we will reach out and uh and see what we can muster for cloth masks, donations, or whatnot.
Thanks, Chief, welcome.
Chief, um, has anyone from the community reached out to you offering um homemade masks or offering to provide masks or donate masks? Right? Because I know there's some other communities that I know of uh that have been very active in that regard.
We we were early on, um, as this thing developed in March into April, we had several calls a week to the point where uh we we left them out, we brought them to the town office. Uh, there were some in the lobby, but then we locked out lobby. So um often, there were people making them fifty at a time, a hundred at a time. We have not seen that lately, but honestly, we haven't requested lately. So our social media will go out very soon. We can start as early as tomorrow. Uh, we put out a plea for uh hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes and boxes were left on our doorstep and and helped us through until the supply chain could could fill. Same with a mask. We'll put out a uh social media post tomorrow on Facebook, Twitter, and I guarantee we'll have uh we'll have some people. We may not have hundreds and hundreds right away, but we'll have people donating.
So maybe social media, um, I don't know if we did a quick spot, chief, with you and and James on Channel 22 with Bob or through the MyExeter apps, um, you know, throwing out.
It makes perfect sense. Be more than happy to.
Okay.
May I say one more thing?
Yes, I was gonna get.
Um, this is coming from me personally. I just implore people, you know, after the decision that we just made to highly recommend that people wear masks. This does not mean that, uh, you know, everyone is the sheriff in town of Maskville.
Yes.
Um, so I'm just saying personally, I think do what, do what's best, be respectful, be good citizens of Exeter. And if you see someone who is not wearing a mask, you know, that's what familial gossip is for at home.
Same with the dog way. Be really
You know, right, like
and educate.
Let's, let's not do public shaming. Let's not do aggressive uh pandering. If someone is not wearing a mask and it makes you feel uncomfortable, please take a few steps and walk distantly away from them and let that be that. I mean, I I, that's the best that I can say for speaking on both lines of, you know, it's a, it can be a decisive, a divisive topic for many. And, you know, with us being on the tail end of self-isolation, I just really hope that people can just stay calm and stay respectful and um, you know, just do it right then.
Agreed. Thank you for saying that. And further to that, you know, everybody has their reason for not wearing a mask. But keep in mind, too, uh, for those of you that that feel compelled to to um, you know, be the sheriff, there are some people that have legitimate, it's not a an opinion, it's a legitimate medical reason that that prohibits them from wearing a mask. And it could be something, um, you know, medically, it could be something emotionally that's medical as well. Um, but I think we're making this recommendation um based on the CDC guidelines, based on the on the guidelines that have been set forth. And obviously, when we get not if, but when we get to that point um where the virus is not as threatening as it is now, then we can have another discussion about stepping back from the recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean, do you have any other updates?
Well, just
We get into our regular business.
Okay, just marker down on uh things that we are seeing, just so the board is aware that with this stay-home order uh being lifted tonight, we are beginning to see uh many organizations reach out to us that have had events permitted through parks and recreation. So um, I know Greg and I worked very closely and Melissa and so forth, uh, everyone on the COVID waiver situation last week. And we have been uh contacting Primex to just get some guidance on uh if we do host festivals or concerts, um, as long as we, if we're going to do that, that we're abiding by whatever guidelines exist for whether it's federal, state, local regarding uh those kinds of events. So that's as much as we have at the moment. But um, you know, it's it's something that a lot of people are grappling with at the moment. And again, it's like being asked to be very nimble very quickly uh based on things that are changing rapidly. So I don't know, Greg, if you want to add to that or not, but.
Yes, uh, we've actually had a number of organizations, not even ones that had previously permitted with us. Some new organizations are reaching out because they're trying to be inventive to get out of their buildings. So that that freight train is coming down the line. Uh, we're gonna have lots of people requesting uh access to our park spaces.
Mr. Dean, that, I guess that begs the question, we um, I believe at our last meeting, uh, the board voted to keep uh Swayze Park close to vehicular traffic through the end of June. Um, with the stay stay-at-home lifting at 11:59 tonight, um, we need to have a conversation about opening the park up. Do how does the board feel? Do we want to keep the parkway um closed to vehicular traffic?
I would be in favor of that, yep.
I'd be in favor of it forever, but, you know, I think we have to have a another discussion about that.
Well, no, that's a, that's an interesting comment. I mean, you know, it with the board, uh, well, we'd have to revisit it at the next meeting. But I mean, the board could consider keeping the parkway closed through the summer, could they not, Mr. Dean?
I I think you could consider that. I mean, I think that we are, you know, we are still in a pandemic. We are still in a situation, uh, an existing situation. So from that perspective, my suggestion would be that you could. I think under a normal condition, obviously, the Swayze Trust talks about the parkway, talks about vehicular traffic. So you want to make sure that you're meeting those minimum requirements. But we're we're certainly still in a situation where I think you can stand on pretty safe ground, making a determination like that if you want to.
Well, not to jump, not to jump ahead, um, but Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, I'll ask you, have the have the trustees actually met? I know at the last meeting, you had conversations, but have you met?
We have not met since uh, there was a meeting to trim a tree. Uh, so no, we have not met. Sorry, that sounds really, I'm not saying that. We we've met, but not since the conversation about keeping Swayze closed. It's been a long night. Um, but I know that it has been brought up that they're in favor of closing the parkway indefinitely to vehicular traffic.
All right. Okay, then that's something we can talk about at the next meeting. Um, all right, Mr. Dean, any other updates on the COVID-19 before we jump to?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, Selectwoman Gilman mentioned it's in the packet, too, about the uh the Housing Stabilization Fund that has come through the state as part of the uh relief programs, and it's $35 million uh to dedicate to the lifting of the moratorium on rent, the New Hampshire Housing Relief Program. So if you look through that and you have any questions about it, uh, by all means, let us know. But it's uh, it's for past due rent and things like that that uh have particular issues associated with that. And again, our our local contact on that's going to be Pam out of my office here. So um, we have a source of information. So if people do have questions, they can reach out to our office and we'll connect them to her, and we will work on individual cases that may be out there that would qualify for this uh this housing relief program.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Yeah, there are a couple of different aspects to that. And I believe um either the applications start June 30th, or June 30th is an important date for anybody that's interested in this because uh, there's two programs, one is a grant and one is a uh, I think a loan. Um, and you've only had a few months to not happen, you know, whatever you've worked out with your landlord or or mortgage holder, um, it's all due, you know, at the end of this, when the governor calls this off, it's just all due. So look into these programs. They're on the um governor's uh nh.gov COVID page. Um, and it's it's not all business. Look for the residential rules, too. It looks like it's all for business, but it's not. Uh, so I encourage people who are coming up against it, who haven't had, who haven't had work for a couple of months and have some rent coming due, to look at this program because it's well worth the effort.
Oh, Julie, you muted.
And it's a $2,500 cap uh per application. So just to point that out.
Mr. Dean, one last thing. Um, with the stay-at-home reopening guidance, I noticed under number six, mitigating exposure, um, they're still encouraging municipal meetings uh to be conducted virtually um or in-person meetings would be limited. Uh, so based on that, it appears as if we would continue to conduct our meetings via Zoom for the foreseeable future.
I I believe that's an option for you, yes.
I think that makes it, I think that allows the largest number of people, hopefully, to gain access to the meetings without putting our health in danger. Because it wouldn't turn away people from the meetings, right, if they were in person?
Uh, we we can.
Right, so.
I think the biggest issues you you'd have in person are the Novak Room and the size of it. It's so small.
You couldn't do it there, right?
You you couldn't allow for social distancing. You couldn't, it it's, and the town hall is another option, but that's not an ideal building either because of the lack of air conditioning uh for one, just one thing, and the uh the acoustics as well. So um, but to the point, the point is that the the stay-at-home is lifting tonight, but the emergent, the state of emergency is still in place, and the executive orders of the governor are all tied to the state of emergency. So therefore, those orders stay in place. Um, so the virtual meetings are part of the guidelines under under that and can continue on.
Okay, so we can ride that wave for as long as possible.
Okay, so consensus of the board will continue on the Zoom for the first until further notice. Okay. Okay, I think we're ready for our regular business. And Madam Clerk, I will turn it over to you for um the list that we have.
Right. Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a jeopardy tax for map 95, lot 64, unit 103, in the amount of $424.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve a land use change tax uh for map map 47, lot eight, unit one, with no tax amount due.
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Uh, Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Uh, next, I uh move to approve a tax abatement for map 111, lot five, unit 1B, in the amount of $114.01.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman, ha, Selectwoman Roundtree.
You almost made it.
There's too many syllables. Uh, clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move uh to approve or to deny, I'm sorry, to deny an abatement for map 88, lot five.
Second.
Motion a second. Further discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Brown, or Selectman Brown, sorry.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Uh, clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move uh a tax payment in the for map 110, lot two, unit 71, for $254.63.
Second.
Motion a second. Further discussion? Seeing none?
Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Permits and approvals. Mr. Bisson, you're back on.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as you see in your packet, uh, and I've mentioned previously at meetings, the Gilman Park Pavilion construction is underway. Uh, we experienced some unforeseeable structural issues with the ground we are going to be putting it on. Uh, when we opened up the earth and discovered it was a stump dump and garbage disposal back in the day, uh, we had to clear it out and go down several feet below that to bring in the appropriate material to create a stable base. That uh extra work brought in a $6,500 additional uh to the construction project. So I am asking the board to use some recreational impact fees. And if you've noticed in your packet, uh, give me a moment, I think it's $21,000 uh is available currently.
2192607.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions or discussion from the board? If not, I entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Rec Department to extend $6,500 out of the rec impact fees for additional excavation and materials for the Gilman Park Pavilion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Uh, Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next, we have a correspondence from Mr. Scott Ruffner relative to the team event that was scheduled for June 27th at Swayze Park. Um, and I just looked to see if he was on to speak to this, but he's not. Um, this correspondence is pretty self-explanatory. Um, this was something that was permitted prior to the pandemic. Um, Mr. Ruffner rescheduled it. It was originally scheduled in May. Um, and he rescheduled it for June 27th. Uh, Greg, has he been in touch with you to talk about um the waivers and everything else he needs to do to hold this event?
Uh, yes, he was in my office earlier today uh discussing it. Told him we are still waiting on hearing back from Primex. Uh, I'm working with Mr. Dean. Uh, we did something similar at as we did with the athletic field permitting. So there will be an addendum to the permit that they will have to sign off, that they're gonna adhere to, uh, keeping all the vendors in social distancing. Uh, Team is also gonna set up a booth to hand out masks and uh hand sanitizer throughout the event uh and other things like that. So and especially the music area, one of the things we discussed, if you've seen the viral picture going around of Central Park, they actually created circles that people could actually sit in. So that was your bubble. So uh, they kind of, we we marked, we would mark the ground to uh give people a sense of this is where you need to. give people a sense of this is where you need to sit if you want to sit and listen to music, so. They seem like they're on board with it. I just have to finalize a checklist and get it over to Russ and get Primex to say yes or no, but right now, there's an inherent risk no matter what. So we're going to work with them to see if we can get this off, especially with the governor allowing any size gatherings to happen after midnight tonight, so.
Okay, a follow-up question for Mr. Dean, and then Selectwoman Gilman has a question. But I think James Murray left. I don't see him. Has Team been in touch with Mr. Murray about, from a health standpoint?
Russ, I can answer this because I believe Scott said he reached out to James this afternoon and said James was fine with it. So that's what I've heard so far.
Okay. Selectwoman Gilman?
Yeah, this just brought up to me a question. I think the words have already been used, that we have these settings, these are the COVID recommendations, and these are the state's recommendations, and then there's this event. And they have plans, which is great, talking to our health officer, doing all these things, and the insurance company. But how much is expected of us as a town, our municipal employees to, and I'm not, and I want to use the wrong departmental word, but to make sure it is safe and that people are taking care of themselves and that the event is taking care of itself? Do we have a responsibility to do that?
Selectwoman Roundtree Oliff?
I guess I would see it similar to the leniency that we gave to restaurants, or not leniency, but, you know, similar, here are the regulations, this is what we ask of you, make sure that the distance, but in terms of quote-unquote policing and, you know, doing spot checks to see if they're doing it accurately, I don't know if we're doing that with the restaurants on a constant basis. Would we do the same thing for events where we give, you know, if they've come to us and we've signed off on it and Greg is doing what he can to help set it up, then I assume we've done what we can. I don't know if it's any different.
So with the restaurants, we actually had a team, a team of department heads, employees that went out to the various restaurants. You know, the economic developer, Darren, you can help me out with this, James Murray, somebody from Fire Police, Jay Perkins from Highway, and Doug Eastman from Building, I think collectively went out as a team and they reviewed each restaurant's plans before signing off on that. So, I mean, Selectwoman Gilman, back to your question, is that something that as a town, as a board, we'd feel more comfortable having a team look at, you know, anybody's plan similar to the request we made of restaurants?
I think so. You know, festivals are very different from, you know, fixed seating or movable seating out at a restaurant. And I liked the idea of the circles. I don't know how the trustees are going to feel about painting.
It's for painted circles, yeah.
You know, it's okay on the pavement, but I don't, I just don't know. I'd like to hear the other opinions if we find it necessary. So because, just because this has to, you know, Mr. Ruffner's had to change his plans rather drastically in order to provide this event. And so the question is, you know, we want to make it a successful event, so should we have that interaction where maybe he hasn't thought of everything, or maybe, you know, we interpret the rules differently, or the guidelines, I shouldn't say rules, the guidelines. I guess I'm looking for the rest of the board to give me an opinion on it. It seemed to have worked with the restaurants pretty well.
And with the restaurants, to your point, you know, there were a couple of places, and I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
But there were, there was at least one that I know of, maybe two, where that team of department heads or staff actually gave the restaurant a better idea that they had and actually enhanced what they were able to do. So, I mean, I think you might be on to something there. I think, you know, based on Mr. Ruffner's written documentation to us, what Greg, conversations he had with Greg and James Murray, I mean, I think he's trying to do everything he can creatively to make this successful and make it safe for everybody. But maybe, again, having those extra sets of eyes might allow him some ideas that maybe he didn't think of. And I'm sorry to cut you off, Selectwoman Cowan.
No, that's all right. And I think it's different, in my view, as in, you know, what is expected in terms of interaction between town employees, you know, safety, safety personnel, whoever. Because with the restaurant situation, it was like, okay, here, we can come in, there's no public here, we don't have to touch anything, we don't have to move anything, we can set, you know, we can sign off on your plans or make suggestions. With these events, which I think, you know, we have, we should, we should allow to go forward. Because I think he's done a really good job about modifying his plans and making sure that we can have it be safe. But I think that, you know, this specific event, because I think the, one of the things that we're going to have to need to take into consideration, which I think is, you know, important to involve Primex, the town manager, our safety team, is like, how much are we asking for our employees to be in these situations because of what, of other people's plans? You know, so a private citizen can opt to go to this event knowing that there are risks, knowing that, you know, and sort of taking all of that into consideration. Like, our police department doesn't get to decide, okay, I'm not going to respond because I don't want to put myself at risk. Or our public works department, people who have to set up all of the barriers and break things down because of what we decide to permit, they don't get to make those decisions. So that's the thing that I think, to get to your point, Julie, how are we making these decisions in what we permit and how we decide to go on? Because, again, you know, with the stay-at-home order lifted, I don't, it's not clear to me that we can deny this stuff.
Right.
Especially, you know, since it's been, it's been permitted. But my, my question and what I think we need to really think strategically about and think critically about what we're asking our own employees to do is also, you know, sort of assume those. So that's what I would, you know, ask that Russ involve, you know, the same sort of safety team that looks at the restaurant situation to evaluate these events. Because none of us, this is not on any of our job descriptions, you know, none of us have had to do this stuff before. So I think we can sort of do the best we can with the tools we have and make it as collaborative as possible while still, you know, letting creative and fun things happen in our town.
And Craig, I have a question for the use of the parkway. Don't we all already asked for like a drawing of where food trucks are going to be or other things are going to be? So we have a template already that can, we can show where the circles are going to be?
Yes, Julie, they actually required to put in a map. I did ask Scott if by chance there would be a chance to get it modified because as of right now, he said they had about 17 vendors and three food trucks to spread out the entire length of the parkway, plus the performances. So just kind of maybe doing something quick like that, Julie, to give us a better sense of how far he's spreading them out. But he's very, very cognizant of the limitations that he has. So he wants to make sure, like, one of the things he, they mentioned is, this is almost a soft event. They're not really going to market it very much. It's really to bring enjoyment to the residents, to give them something to get out there on a nice day and listen to some music and maybe hit some vendors. And it's almost similar, Julie, if you really look at it. This is no different than us discussing moving the farmer's market back to Swayze as well, if that's an option.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So, Mr. Dean, how do you best suggest we follow up with Mr. Ruffner to tighten this up so that he can go forward with this?
Right, so I like the idea of working with Greg tomorrow, as soon as tomorrow or the next day, on the list of items and then engaging others into that process to address the issues that Molly raised, I think are good ones. And just want to, and I think it's worth putting together a team of people, we'll think through who should be part of that conversation, but three, four people to make sure that we cover as many of the bases as we need. And then I think, to your point earlier, Mr. Chairman, I think that's a good model that we did use successfully. And I think if we have the same makeup of people around the table, maybe minus one or so, two, or add one or two different, just to make sure we're covering the bases on this, I think that's a good way to go. So that's what I would suggest.
I would also recommend, if we're going to include the great idea of spray painting circles, that trustees have to be involved in that.
Yes, absolutely.
Very good.
So Greg, considering that, all the movable parts here that Mr. Ruffner needs to go through, then I'd like, maybe if we could get on this first thing, because he's only got 11 days, so.
Yeah. We can, I'll contact Scott first thing in the morning and work with him and getting all that. And then I'll work with Russ as well in having that team formed and the checklist finalized.
Okay, great. Terrific, thank you. There are no other permits? Mr. Dean?
Do you mind? The dog warrant is actually prepared to be signed by the board.
Oh, okay.
The warrant with unlicensed dogs. And if the board could just move to approve the dog warrant, we'll chase you for signatures on it, but we would like to get it out through the town clerk, which we do every year. It's a normal piece of town business.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the dog warrant.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Selectman Brown?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Oliff?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So Pam will reach out to you for signatures.
Great. So back to you, Mr. Dean. Do you have any other updates outside of COVID for your report?
Uh, no.
Okay. The next is Select Board Committee reports, and I'll ask everybody to give a report if you've had any Select Board meetings, I mean, committee meetings. Mr. Brown, Selectman Brown, I'll start with you.
So I've talked to different members of the Communications Committee. We are set to have a meeting next Tuesday. We're working on the agenda and getting that made public.
Okay. And have you heard from the Facilities Committee at all?
I have not.
No?
Okay.
Selectwoman Roundtree Oliff?
Unmuted. The Housing Committee met on June 12 and will likely be, that's, yeah, that was the other day, likely be in touch with the Select Board to schedule a meeting to update everyone on the Rockingham Planning Commission's multi-unit map and PowerPoint presentation. So they'll be discussing the unveiling of that project, and then there'll probably be a couple of online sessions to describe that to the town as a whole.
Great, thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
I missed my Conservation Commission meeting for, I don't know why. My alarm didn't go off or something. The rest of my work has been state or county oriented. The county budget's coming up. We're voting on it the 24th. And just to let you know, their portion of our, of our tax impact, well, their budget is reduced by 0.17%, something like that. So it'll be a little less on our tax bills. That's really all I have.
Terrific, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
Yes, I had a Planning Board meeting the other night where we continued hearing a case for a variance in a specific property in Exeter.
Great, thank you. I had a Sustainability Committee meeting June 2. Mr. Sharples introduced the intern from UNH that will be working with him. And he also gave an update on several of the grants that he's been working on. And the bulk of the rest of the meeting was working with the committee as to how best to utilize Mr. Sharples in his role and how best to revamp the agenda and perhaps using subcommittees to work on certain things that the committee hopes to to continue working on. They've talked about film festivals, they've talked about communication, how to work with other boards and committees. So, you know, again, this committee's just under a year old and, you know, starting to work with Dave to accomplish some of the things that they said they wanted to do. But we had, in our public comment, Terry Harmon alluded to the fact that the committee voted unanimously to adopt the draft job description that they had submitted to the Select Board in early October. And of course, without going through, you know, the entire history, we know that the Budget Recommendations Committee did not vote to approve a position at a certain amount of money. And the Select Board, when the budget came to us back, I believe in December, voted to increase the budget to allow Mr. Sharples to take on a big part of those responsibilities, in part because he was already doing a lot of the work. I mentioned to the Sustainability Committee that their vote to adopt the job description, you know, really wasn't going to play into what Dave's roles and responsibilities are going to be. And obviously, there's no job to be funded. You know, that's something that they can try to reconsider later in the year and go through the Budget Recommendations Committee. But short of money being appropriated on the town warrant next year, you know, it's unlikely, it's unorthodox that the Select Board would adopt a job description without having an actual job allocated to the budget. So I will honor their request and put that on the agenda either at the next meeting or July, but something we can discuss further at that time. Selectwoman Gilman? You're muted, Julie.
I did have some things coming up that I should say. The Heritage Commission is meeting Tuesday. We just had a demolition review for Seven Park Street, which is the second building on property. If you recall, the first one was a building that was torn down without review and was quite, it made us quite sad because it was, had beautiful history to it. But this, so this one is for the second part of the property. So we'll be making a decision on a recommendation, whether it should, if it's a good example of architecture in that neighborhood, that should stay. And then on Thursday, the HTC is hearing the proposal for the Ioka again.
Thank you. Okay, moving to correspondence. First piece of correspondence in the packet is a draft proposal from Renee Allen, which I thought was quite an intriguing idea. Renee has offered to donate all the profits from the three mystery books that she's writing towards a physical commemoration of the historical Black community of Exeter. And she's proposing a small pocket park with four benches along the, along the parkway. My understanding is, and I corresponded with her through email, is that she was going to also contact the Swayze trustees, obviously, Mr. Sharples, Mr. Dean, the Heritage Commission, and the Historical Society, as well as the Independence Museum and Racial Unity Team. But, and she told me that she'd reach back to me once she's corresponded with everybody. But I thought it was a pretty intriguing idea. Anybody comments or thoughts? Selectwoman Gilman?
Why are you asking me? Because it's history?
No, because your hand's up.
Sorry, I never lowered it, sorry. No, I'm intrigued by the idea. I would love to hear from the other bodies. That neighborhood, Green Street in particular, used to have a different name. Pam Chedum could tell you it. I don't remember. But it was the area where the African-Americans lived at one point, even though they were actually all over town. even though, uh, they were actually all over town. Um, so some kind of commemoration in that area would be good. I, I just want to hear from the other bodies if this is the right place for it.
And, and that's, that's what I got from Renee is that she wanted to hear from everybody else too. So, um, but I thought that that was a, the draft was a good, good, good idea. Um, the next piece of correspondence, um, is about the vote on not allowing bigger sized trucks. And Mr. Dean, I don't know, did you or selectwoman Gilman want to speak to this?
Um, I think just a general sense of, uh, when the board, I know we sent a link to everybody to sort of re engage with the background on the bigger trucks. And as long as everybody still feels the same that they did back then, I know we have a couple of new members since then, but, um, we were going to reach out and the plan was to write something up to our reps, uh, to alert them to this issue and hopefully get their support to continue to monitor and oppose any uh, large scale increases in truck sizes.
Selectwoman Gilman.
Yeah, this is something that, um, that group came to, uh, Russ and they asked me, I don't know. Um, but I actually had spoken to Representative Papas about this, uh, about a year ago, just casually walking down the street. Um, and it's a, if you don't understand what it is, truck manufacturers and supply chains want to have triple trailers instead of just the double trailers that we have now. They wanted to make triple trailers and they want longer trucks. And it is, in my opinion, just dangerous on the road. So that's what this group is about, trying to prevent that from happening. So I'd be more than happy to author a letter to the representative, um, and well, all of our congressional people, if you'd like.
Any questions or comments on that from anybody on the board? Okay, next we have correspondence from the health trust, um, discussing possible, uh, credits on the health insurance premiums. Um, Mr. Dean, I believe you're still on the board of directors of the health trust?
Yes, I am. And, uh, this, this is a notice from the board that, uh, due to the COVID-19 emergency, uh, they are actually looking at returning some surplus, um, this fall when the tax rate is set. So that would be, uh, the first time, I think in three years or four years that that's happened. So, uh, we can anticipate some amount of money coming back from health trusts when, when, uh, when they set their new rates in October. And they're actually going to try to get it done a little bit sooner than that. Um, so hopefully we'll have some good news because that's unanticipated revenue. We didn't expect that. So even though COVID-19's had quite an impact, it's, it's actually had a positive impact on health claims. So therefore there's surplus, uh, coming back.
Mr. Dean, to put this in perspective, my client, um, of course their fiscal year ends 6:30, but they are sending a significant amount of money back uh, to all of the municipalities in Massachusetts that are part of the pool. And additionally, um, just for you to maybe reach out to Primex, um, uh, they're also going to extend, um, uh, and I don't know if, if Primex offers a, um, a program where if you pay all of the premium upfront, you get a discount. Uh, but if so, um, my client's actually extending that 90 days. And they're also taking a look at, uh, premium audits as well, just to try to help out municipalities in any way they can. So if you haven't heard anything, if you could ask around, that would be great.
Will do. Thanks.
And the final piece of correspondence, um, was the April 6th, 2020 memorandum on the abatement recommendation. Uh, Mr. Dean, correct me if, this is the one that the board reviewed in March?
Right, you, you reviewed it. I went back and looked at the minutes to try to find a, a decision on this and I could not. So I just asked the board maybe to review the letter again. Uh, the recommendation was to deny the abatement. And I thought that's what was voted too, but when I went to the minutes, I could not find a record of the vote.
I'll look back to, cause my, my recollection was this was the first board meeting of the new board.
I think it wa, it was, yes.
There were two things that I recall that we had tabled to look over during that board. That was the only, the first physical meeting that we had, right?
Okay, yes, yes.
Right. And then one of them was for the restaurant for Billingsgate.
Hmm.
Remember, and then we held off on that. And then there was, there was the other one that you're discussing that I thought we had come back and vote on the following meeting, but I guess.
I thought we did too. Um.
Was that in the midst, was that in the midst of the bombing or, I can't remember.
That would have been the last meeting.
Things were a little messy that day.
So I, I just want to give you like a notice that this is sort of in abeyance while we're trying to fi, figure it out, but
Okay.
we may have to come back to you for another, another round of review and vote.
Okay.
Okay. Um, with that, there's no other business other than, uh, our next date is June 29th and then after that, July 13th for our meetings. Um, any other business the board wishes to discuss? Selectwoman Gilman, do you still?
Yeah, I've been, uh, I've been tossing up and down. I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that in the correspondence, that whole list at the end of the senate bills that are going forward. Um, I got the information on it last week for, in, for bills that had already been heard. So there wasn't anything to do about it. But what the senate's doing is, uh, um, omnibus bills and they're taking one bill and creating amendments that attach a whole bunch of other bills to it, seemingly in the same uh, uh, area of concern. But I just wanted you to know that this is, when it comes to the house, the house is going to have to vote on one bill with a bazillion amendments or even just one amendment listing out all of those other things. So it's one of those situations where we're going to have to decide, uh, do we like the bill? Or do we like one of those amendments? And do you vote for the whole, you have to vote for the whole thing or not at all?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's fun.
Any other business, comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion in a second, okay. Madam Clerk?
Selectman Brown.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.